Hopefully use more local renewable power. PCE offers 100% green renewable power option for a small additional kilowatt hour premium. Someone who signs up for Green 100 is obviously very motivated to use 100% renewable electricity. I think it would be very important for the success of this option for you to be able to show how their Green 100 funds will quickly be applied to supplying 100% renewable energy. They will not expect their funds to be combined with other regular funds to meet intermediate partial energy goals required by California. We would like to know how does PCE segregate these funds and use them for 100% green energy? Well, they reported separately to our citizens and to California. So that's one question we have, but we are definitely in favor of us. We meet on a monthly basis, our working group, to figure out ways to meet the Energy Action Plan goals, as I said, one of which goal is 51% reduction in the cost of electricity for citizens of Nevada County. Actually, each Nevada city, Nevada and Grass Valley all have about the same energy action plans, all with the same goals, the same money for the citizens. So I think that's very useful. By the way, just an offside comment, I don't think I had much of an option to option out of PG&E when I moved here. I think I was pretty much had to be PG&E. This gives us an option to option out. Actually, I'd like to option in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Any other comments, questions? Very good. Madam Clerk, any?
We have no callers or emails on this item, Chair.
Very good. I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board. Are there any other questions at this time? All right, seeing none. I think I can entertain a motion to accept the report, and that's the only action we would be taking.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall, second Supervisor Bullock. Can I, a voice vote, okay?
Yes, she may do a voice vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. Thank you so very much, Don. Thank you, Allison, Gary, and Tom, great having you here. I'm sorry, guys. Next on our agenda is a county council issue. This is a resolution approving Amendment Three to the contract between the County of Nevada and Abbott Kinderman Incorporated for legal services related to the Idaho, Maryland mine Rise Gold Grass Valley Project, increasing the contract price by $125,000 for a maximum amount of $375,000, amending the schedule of services, authorizing the Chair of the Board to execute the amendment, and directing the Auditor Controller to amend the fiscal year 2023-24 planning department budget, and this requires a four-fifth affirmative vote. Madam Counsel?
Thank you, Chair. And just reminding this board and that this contract was brought forward originally so that we would have experts to assist us in all our preparation in terms of the EIR, et cetera. And it was agreed at the very start that this contract would be reimbursed by Rise Gold, which they have continued throughout. Just a note that I wanted to bring to your attention, and that is that the contract as previously approved, on the Second Amendment on the 120, I'm sorry, the contract as previously approved, we went over in the last fiscal year by approximately $29,000. And just for information, again, that was approved by Rise Gold that we would be going over. And just as an explanation, part of that overage was the fact that I lost the deputy that was the person assigned to this about a month before this came to the Planning Commission. And in order to not delay that hearing, we brought on another member from Abbott and Kinderman to sit with me in that hearing, the two-day hearing in the Planning Commission. So that greatly upped it. And again, that was approved by Rise Gold to reimburse, and they are agreeing to that. And they are also agreeing to this current increase. The reason for this current increase is in meetings with Rise Gold recently, they have asserted that they have a vested right to mine. That is, a vested right is a legal principle that asserts that they have a legal right to mine on the Brunswick site. They have not yet filed the petition, but they have told me that they are planning to file that petition. Once they do that, we have a mandate to address that and to take that first before the Planning Commission and then to the Board of Supervisors. We currently, and that petition that they bring, that is completely based solely on facts and on law, and so it's a very specific type and very narrow kind of petition. Right now, we are still on board to bring the conditional use permit and the mine to this board. I believe those dates are October 2nd and 3rd. But with this information, and I'm wanting to make sure this board understands and that the public understands, that we may have to move those dates and go first through this process of a determination related to the petition on the vested rights. So the money coming before you is in anticipation of that possibility.
Very good.
And just to be completely clear, they have not yet filed that petition.
Thank you, Kit. Or do you want to?
Thank you, Kit. I just want to confirm with you that the, there's no process misstep on behalf or on the part of the county in the recent activity that you were just describing to us today, is that right?
That's correct. This was just, as I said, more recently brought up. We have asked for them to have a letter of intent so that we know that's what they're going to do. We have not yet received that, but it's nothing that the county would have done in anticipation. It's the first we've heard, so.
Okay, so relatively speaking, the Board of Supervisors is just now having the opportunity to weigh in on this concept that's being brought forward by the applicant.
Correct. And we have spoken to them and think that the, again, in terms of the legal process, this should, the vested rights is a very specific process, and it needs to really go before the conditional use permit. But again, that's up to the applicant ultimately.
That is up to the applicant?
Correct.
Not the county?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa? Sue, I mean Heidi?
Thank you. Yeah, just again, to provide more information as much as we can to the public and to be clear, this issue of a vested right, they could have brought that earlier, so we were aware of it and could have dealt with it along with the conditional use permit, but they did not. They are bringing it up now, so we are having to respond potentially to scramble to bring it to the Planning Commission and then to the Board of Supervisors. This is out of our control. This is the Rise Gold Mine bringing this concept into the middle of our process. It's their right, apparently, but nothing we can do but respond. Is that correct?
I think you've stated that very accurately.
Okay, thanks. Unfortunate, thank you.
No, I thank you for the clarification. I think that, yeah, this is literally kind of the first that I've heard of this, so I just want the public to know that we're trying to be as transparent as possible in this process. And if we have to move the dates, once we know what the new dates will be, we'll absolutely get that to the public as quickly as possible. But right now, until we get the petition filed, or the application, or whatever we wanted to call it, petition filed from them, we're a little bit up in the air here. So I know that members of the public will definitely be probably reaching out to us individually. Feel free to do that, so we can answer questions as we get the information.
Sue? Okay. And the only, just to reiterate, these expenses on this contract are the expenses of the applicant, Rise Gold?
That's correct. So they reimburse us for this contract.
Okay.
And they know that this additional amount is in anticipation of this possibility.
Very good. Would, I will open it up to public comment, questions from the public? Michael?
I didn't hear, what's the period of time that they have to respond? Like what's, like, what's, is it one year, six months, one month? What's the timing that they have to respond back or by? I think you understand the question, thank you.
So if I could, there's not a specific time in which they're, they have to file their petition, but in discussions, it's understood by them that, again, if they have a vested right, they should, we should go through that process before we, because it changes the whole process, we wouldn't be facing a conditional use permit. So it's, so right now, we are going forward with the hearing as scheduled, but I am anticipating that they will be filing a petition.
Just a little bit differently, sorry. How long can this be drug out, this process?
And I'm glad you asked that, because I think both Rise Gold and the county are very anxious to move this forward. So we don't anticipate, because of the fact that the vested rights issue is so much more narrow, we do think that we can go through that process relatively quickly and not delay. So we're hoping to finish the whole process by, say, depending on what we've, I can't really say what, we're hoping to finish the process related to the vested rights definitely by the end of this year.
Thank you, County Counsel. Kit Elliott?
Yeah, I think we've been anticipating an October 2nd and 3rd date that would actually bring some sort of a conclusion, and how this is a new element that has been brought into it, so. Is there any other public comment, questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the board, or is there any other further comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we approve.
Motion Supervisor Swardout?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Hall, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, District Four.
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
And District Two?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Board. All right, look at this. We have a quick break, if anybody wants to take a quick time. We have a timed item at 11:30, and we're back on schedule. Okay, we're close enough. I'm going to reconvene this meeting of the Nevada County Supervisors, their regular meeting of August 8th, 2023, it's 11:30. And our next item is an item that's being brought forward by Supervisors Swardout and Hook, and this is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the County of Nevada, Rough and Ready Fire Protection District, Penn Valley Fire Protection District, and Nevada County Consolidated Fire District to support the reorganization of these districts into one consolidated district and provide gap funding in an amount not to exceed $1 million to operate Rough and Ready Fire Station Number 59. Prior to consolidation, fiscal year 2023-24, $400,000, and fiscal year 24-25, $600,000, authorizing the Chair of the Board of Supervisors to execute the MOU. And I think I've introduced it, but Sue, you want to take it from here?
No, you did, thank you, Ed. This has been an interesting adventure, and Supervisor Swardhouse and I have co-chaired our, our Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee. We've met numerous times over the last few months, and with that, there's quite a team members that work through it. Caleb, I'd love you to be able to go through us, so Caleb Dardick, I'll let you take it away. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Hook, Chair Schofield, members of the board. My name's Caleb Dardick, Assistant CEO, and I'm here with Martin Pult, our CFO, to briefly introduce just a little bit of the background on this memo, MOU that's before you today. I want to start by thanking your leadership on the Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee. We had a very good team, and I want to thank not only, you know, it's just a real pleasure to be able to provide staff support to such an important and community endeavor here and to be in the room together to, at this milestone. So I just want to thank the team, Martin Pult, especially want to thank Auditor Controller Gina Will, who's with us today. She's really been an instrumental part of this, working very closely with the fire districts to provide information about the finances and to really chart a path forward. County Counsel Kit Elliott has been, you know, if we've met weekly, she's been meeting and working with the staff and supporting this effort daily, and has brought in outside counsel to support this effort with expertise in LAFCO, that's been an invaluable asset. Also want to thank, he's not here today, but IGS Director Steve Monahan, who brings great experience in this area, has been working in the emergency services space, probably understands the importance of the issues before us probably better than any other staff. And so as a team, you know, we have met with you on a regular basis, we have worked very closely with our guests, and such a privilege to introduce our Penn Valley Fire Protection District Chief, Don Wagner, and our Nevada County Consolidated Fire District Chief, Jason Robitell. Again, the communication has been constant, we have been learning from each other, and really, I think, come to a place of a great mutual understanding and support. And that's really what this initiative is today. It's a way for the county to support the reorganization of these three fire districts into a combined district and to provide the time, the year to two years required, up to two years that would be required for this consolidation to move forward, and provide the resources to support the Rough and Ready Fire Station, ensure that that community has the support and fire protection that it needs. I would be remiss not to also thank LAFCO Executive Director S.R. Jones, who has been a very instrumental and important leader in this effort with a great deal of information, because of course, this reorganization process ultimately is a decision of the LAFCO Board, of which some of you sit on. I do want to say one thing about the Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee, is that it is our intention to remain in place and to meet regularly as needed to support the consolidation effort over the next 12 to 24 months. So the decision before you today, I do think Supervisor Chair Schofield did summarize it well just now, but this is approving an MOU. This MOU is memorandum of understanding. It has already been signed and approved by the respective three fire boards, Penn Valley, Rough and Ready, and Consolidated, who all voted unanimously to do this, also with the understanding of what is a fairly aggressive timeline that's been agreed upon to really move this forward in a concerted way. I want to turn it over now to Martin Pult to talk a bit about the funding, the requests, sources in use, and the oversight and engagement that we're anticipating.
Thank you, Chair Schofield, members of the board, Martin Pult, your Chief Fiscal Officer, and reiterate and agree with everything Caleb said. I really feel privileged to serve in this capacity and support this effort. I did want to talk about the funding a little bit. So you have in the MOU, the MOU states the county funds are going to fund the gap between the expenditures of running the Rough and Ready Fire District Fire Station and the various revenues that come into Rough and Ready. So there's approximately $490,000 of fire assessment, property taxes, and other revenues that come in. So our piece is intended to fill the gap between the revenue and expenditures for that two-year period. And those funds, the source of funds is at the Board's discretion. It could be from any county funding source, or there was a safer grant that was applied for by Penn Valley Fire District. If those funds come in, that could reduce the county's contribution for this gap funding. The funding will not exceed $1 million for the two-year period, starting July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2025, and it may be less than $1 million. I'll touch on that in a moment. But the MOU also states that the fire district will provide copies of budgets and actual revenue and expenditure detail. So there's significant back and forth and monitoring that we'll be doing collaboratively. Attachment A in the package that is submitted with this board item shows a $1.148 million total expenses for year one and about $1.158 million for year two. We have an agreed-upon procedure with the fire districts, working closely with the fire chiefs, and Gina Will, very instrumental process whereby those funds will be requested. So there's a monthly process, we have a monthly report, it's in the format, that's also in Attachment A. And so each month, the actual expenses and revenues will be provided, and we'll see, and will be determined each month what the county gap funding will be, and it may be less than $1 million. We're not sure in the end what those actual expenses and revenues are going to be, but we'll be working, as Caleb said, throughout that two-year period. We're planning to work closely with the fire districts, the auditor controller, to monitor and meet those requirements. We are recommending the general fund unassigned fund balance, your staff memo says that. And for the $1 million of general fund, unless another funding source is found or the safer grant comes through, we are looking at prioritizing the year-end 22-23 results. So if the general fund is positive in 22-23, we're recommending, if it comes, whatever that number may be, if, to use some of those funds for this, this purpose. And that concludes my presentation of the fiscal components, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and pass it back to Mr. Dardick.
All right, thank you. Well, now we'd like to turn it over to our two chiefs for their part of this presentation.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, Chair Schofield and supervisors, county staff. We're excited, Chief Wagner and I, to sit before you this morning. This is a very exciting moment for our organizations, not only our agencies, our members, but the community. Already, we've seen some efficiencies in how we, operationally, how we're servicing the public. Our request this morning is that you would support our efforts by this gap funding, why we spend the time to conduct thorough analysis and due diligence and conduct the feasibility studies for a long-term solution. We believe through that process, we're going to address redundancies, address efficiencies, and move forward in a positive manner. Unfortunately, the need to staff that Station 59, Rough and Ready, has outpaced our Board's ability to come together, do a proper analysis. So this gap funding is going to be critical, that we kind of lay the groundwork, ensure that our organizations are not diluting the service to the current, our current customers, and that we will look for a long-term, sustainable future together. This gap, the staffing is kind of a three-phase approach. Our first phase was a staffing agreement between Rough and Ready, Penn Valley, and Nevada County Consolidated. That was done prior to standing up that station July 1st, and since that station's been operational and we avoided closing that station permanently, we've seen a huge benefit to not only our operations, but for that apparatus to flex and respond rapidly to people's needs, and that's been very critical so far. We hope through the 24 months, it'll give us ample time for us to look at, like I said, a long-term, sustainable solution and lay the foundation appropriately. I do want to take this time, I know Caleb has thanked a lot of members, I want to thank our crews. You know, I've always said, through adversity, we see our strengths. And this is always said, through adversity, we see our strengths. And this has been a great illustration for me, kind of being new to the county, and just witnessing our staff members having that service-before-self attitude and philosophy. They rise to the occasion, and I just can't be more gracious and thankful for their participation, as well as partnering with Chief Wagner here and having a similar philosophy. So that's kind of what I wanted to start in with. And I want to turn over the microphone to Chief Wagner.
Chair Schofield and Supervisors, I don't have much else to add on to what he just, what Chief Robitell said, other than thank you. And thank you for the opportunity. It's fifteen months ago, I started working with Rough and Ready, and I did not have any vision of where this was going to go. But this vision here of where we're going now is beyond where I had intended. I mainly wasn't looking to try to protect that community. And we've achieved that. So, thank you.
And again, for your consideration, it's been very pleasant to be seen, is I know that many will see this as a handout, but what we want the county to realize is that we're an investment and not a bill. So when you invest in us, we want to give a good return on investment of what we can do and provide the services, and we're always looking for ways to improve and move forward. And we're, again, we just appreciate this opportunity for you this morning. And I want to thank our boards also. I need to address that, their willingness to come together and have discussions on very sensitive topics. And it's been very obvious to me that we all share the same mindset. We focused on what the need is to the community, and then we're just working backwards from there. So we're excited to kind of get things kicked off after today, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you Chiefs. I'm going to kick it back to our Ad-Hoc Committee to start this. Sue, I'll bring it back to you, and then to Lisa.
Thanks Chair. No, I just, my thanks and admiration to the communities that came together and made this happen, really. This started out with a little community that wasn't going to have fire service or emergency medical. And I thought it was really interesting to see the day we opened on July first, how busy that little, that little department was, right? They're in need. They're right in the middle of everything, right? So that was very exciting. And then just to have these boards come together and have this big conversation about how we can make this work. This went way further than we thought in the beginning. This was really just about keeping Penn Valley, being able to keep Rough and Ready open, and how we were going to contract to do that. And this big picture is so important to this whole community. So I'm really excited, and just so much thanks for, I reached out to my county and said, I need, we need help. I can't have seven hundred community parcels with no fire services in the middle of Penn Valley and Consolidated. I mean, we are all in high fire service areas, correct? And so we're all looking at losing insurance. We're looking at all these things, but not to mention health and safety that comes down to it. And to watch these people come together and really see what that self-before-service is, I've just, I'm overwhelmed. And then to see this, all you guys in the back that are here supporting this, the firefighters that have to work with this, and giving up time, working overtime, trying to make sure all that stays together, just shows what a really strong community Penn Valley, Rough and Ready, Consolidated, and really all of Nevada County is. We really are a group that comes together. So, and to all of our staff that came, we've had so many meetings. I can't tell you how many meetings these two chiefs and Caleb and Kit. Kit's been incredible. So, and I want to thank our CEO too, because she had to say, okay, let's, let me listen. Let me hear. What are some of the ideas? Let me give you some staff to try and fix this. And because you are the center of our communities, that's who we work for. And I just appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. So thank you guys. And everybody that had to, Lisa, you've been a great partner in this, like sharing this message, talking to our community members. We mean, we have to, we have to let everybody know what's going on with this, and this has been huge. LAFCO, I mean, we're not done there. I mean, we have got LAFCO members on here, and we're, that'll be another process that we're still headed through. And S.R. Jones, she just stepped right up to the plate and jumped in. And so I got to say, she put in a lot of hours on this so far, too. So just want to thank everybody.
Thank you. So I just want to say first that the return on investment is shown every day with all the work that all of you do, and it's very much appreciated. So when we started this process, when I first got involved, I didn't even realize that I have a very, very small sliver of the Rough and Ready Fire District in, in my district. So I was very happy to be appointed to this committee and work on this. And when we first started, it was, well, the county doesn't bail out special districts. So where we started and where we came is huge. And I'm so proud of all of us for really stepping up, because it is our responsibility to help people. And having fire services, it's just, it's huge. And the EMS, both in those communities are huge. So I just appreciate all the work that you've done. I did have the opportunity to attend each one of your board meetings, which were fantastic. The spirit of collaboration and cooperation that you've all shown, not just with us, but with each other, is, has been terrific. So thanks for all you do. I look forward to following, you know, continuing, following this process. We're not done. This is just kind of the first step. Consolidation is going to take some work. The governance component of that is really important of how we all come together. So keep up the good work, and we look forward to continuing the discussions.
Thanks Lisa. Marty?
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. And we've talked a lot about it. Thank you to the Ad-Hoc for all the time and effort you put into it. I know we've had many discussions. We arrived at a great place, but it's, there's been a lot of tough discussions in this process. I appreciate your willingness to consolidate, work together to serve those parcels that Sue outlined. That's really what I think the Board cares most about. I did want to mention just a couple of details. There is a third voice in the process, and that's LAFCO. I know Supervisor Hook and I serve on LAFCO, and there's other LAFCO members here. But Chief, can you just briefly outline in general two things, the process that LAFCO will go through to approve the consolidation, and then also the feasibility study that you described?
So currently, Rough and Ready and all the fire districts were in the process of a municipal service review that LAFCO does every five years across the state. LAFCO's in each county. So that study is being performed right now. A lot of the data tables, however, before the data tables and full report was finalized, the need arise. So that's why we had to intervene the way we did. So that's kind of a report card for all the fire districts on opportunities, looking at our strengths, weaknesses, and threats, and it outlines that. Then there is a component of the LAFCO application, is the fire districts have to file that application. Fortunately, with this municipal service review and having a third-party entity already involved in those studies, we're, there's some significant cost savings when we can have an add-on to a sphere of, or a scope of work to talk about a feasibility study and then a long-term plan. So they set the benchmark of kind of what the standards need. To be honest, when I came to this, this county, I was shocked that the fire potential, and then we have only two members on our fire engines. So that's something that we're trying to address, especially as our aging population, the need for advanced life support, that component. So we feel like the study's going to address some of those. And I think with our partnerships and reducing, you know, some of those overlaps, also having a partner like Penn Valley that's been in the transport business and have managed successfully advanced life support, there's a lot of experience that other districts are going to lean on them. So when we blend all our talents, so to go back to your LAFCO question, yes, there is a process. Our boards also are pacing, and we have benchmarks. And we just want to address, you know, every need, but not only look at, this is a, we're not sprinting, but this is also a marathon. So that's how we're approaching this, this study.
More to come. Yeah, thank you. And then one quick question is, Rough and Ready is the board, I know the entity itself is still intact, but is the board having, conducting regular meetings that the public can attend?
Yes, they are. In fact, the next Rough and Ready Board meeting is tonight at six-thirty. Their meeting is their second Tuesday of the month at six-thirty at the Fire Station Fifty-Nine.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank the Ad-Hoc Committee and staff and all the fire chiefs and LAFCO. This is one of the issues I didn't have to be involved in much at all. You all did all the work and then brought a great solution to us. So thank you for all the work you put into that. I mean, this is truly historic. With this agreement, we're going to ensure that all of our homes and land and people are going to be protected the way we need them to be. We're going to be ensuring that our firefighters and EMS personnel are paid to do the work we need them to do. And we're bringing efficiencies to the process. And Chief Robitell, you already alluded to that. I think we've been interested in a long time in seeing what kind of efficiencies could be found in consolidation, but it's such a difficult process. So I just want to commend you all for doing the hard work, for looking beyond your individual district. I think this is going to be a great model for other districts in the state that are struggling. And, and this, this collaboration is going to be better for all of us. So really commend everybody for your willingness and openness and leadership. And I'm excited to see this go through.
Well, and I echo everybody else. I, like Heidi, wasn't involved with it that much. The Ad-Hoc Committee, the chiefs, your teams behind you are the ones that did all the work, Caleb, our crew. But my, my thinking is, you know, we are, we are good partners. And when we have something like a large fire or a winter storm, we work well together. But we do have our boundaries, and we do have our silos. So it's really wonderful to see everybody, including individual departments, come together like they have in the time that they have. It's been very, very impressive, and I commend all of you guys, and I commend your, your teams behind you. So I know, as Lisa said, there was much to do yet. So we'll be working together on this and hope that it comes out very successfully. And with that, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments and questions. Michael?
Michael Taylor, District One. It's an honor to be able to say, I am extremely thankful to see that the Board of Supervisors has worked so well with the three fire department, or three districts, fire districts. I think the million dollars cost of value is, is, is well-spent money. And as far as the Ad-Hoc Committee, is there, are there citizens on the Ad-Hoc Committee? And if so, or if not, I'd be happy to be on that committee, working or helping move this process forward. I do have some questions about LAFCO and the feasibility study. I think the long-term goal in the county, maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but the long-term goal would be consolidating all the fire districts. And I'm wondering if the feasibility study is broad enough to include other fire districts as, as far as that feasibility study. I'd like to acknowledge that, in my view, firefighters, police, and teachers are underpaid. And I think that anything we can do to support this process moving forward is, is a great accomplishment. I, I'm really surprised from hearing that the, the Rough and Ready was going to have to close to the point that we are right now. It seems, I don't think I've seen government work this fast. I mean, I'm super appreciative that we're at this, at this spot, and we're supporting Rough and Ready being consolidated as part of Penn Valley and Consolidated. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Hi Wayne.
Hi, my name's Wayne Clower, and I also want to say that I totally appreciate what the fire department, the school, and everybody does for everybody, and that they're part of the community. But I want to say that I, I came in and gave a presentation in early this year about people that had their property tax bills dropped and are not paying their fire fees. And I have given about a dozen examples to different fire departments, to Caleb Dardik and to everybody else. And I got a five-page letter back, which I hope all of you read regarding that issue, and the fact that the only way that the people were going to pay money was, is if I physically turned them in myself. So it has to be a neighbor against neighbor issue. Some of them probably owe fifty thousand dollars on single properties. But for commercial marijuana grows on Buckboard Road to have their property tax dropped on their fire tax, no one can even tell me if they've paid it yet. Are they going to pay it? Are you guys supporting the legal marijuana grows, as you said in the paper the other day, Ed, that much that you're going to not charge them the fire fee? The Assessors Office said they will not tell the fire department, and they, the Assessors Office won't tell the Building Department if they find an illegal house or a house that's not paying. If the Assessors Office finds a house that's not paying the fire school, fire and/or school, they're not going to tell them. They don't want to be policing agencies. They want me as a general person in the public to be that policeman. And that's not what the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you Wayne.
Good afternoon. Clayton Thomas, President of Nevada County Professional Firefighters. First off, I just want to echo a lot of the thanks that has gone around this room. I started my career here locally in nineteen ninety-one as a fire explorer with Nevada County Consolidated. So I've witnessed almost every other consolidation that's happened since then. Spoken with all of the supervisors at various times in the CEO's office on a bunch of fire issues. I have never seen the kind of movement, the kind of collaboration, the kind of relationships built and fostered in such a short amount of time. It is truly impressive. And I can say from the firefighter perspective, there's two things that firefighters hate, the way things are and change. In this particular case, though, one hundred percent of my membership supports this. We see the value in, in the efficiencies that Chief Robitell was talking about. And we see this as a huge improvement for all of the, the citizens in the county, because fire service is so interrelated. So while this is, you know, primarily something happening in, in the West Side County districts, you know, we all work together. Just a month and a half ago, Truckee Fire District had to send a fire engine all the way over here to cover because we were so busy. So having the depth of resources that this is going to help ensure is a huge issue for the citizens, and it also affects the safety of our members to ensure that we have enough help when we're doing that kind of strenuous work. So the support of, you know, three different fire district boards, the board supervisors, the county staff, it's truly been a great thing to see and very positive for, for everyone in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you Clayton.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Supervisors. Sam Goodspeed, Division Chief for Grass Valley in Nevada City. I hadn't planned on speaking this afternoon, so I had nothing prepared. But I just want to say that I am wholeheartedly in support of what is being proposed in, for Consolidated and Penn Valley. The restoration of the staffing at Station Fifty-Nine is huge for that community, but that also spreads out to the rest of the county. We are all partner agencies. We help each other on a regular basis. So just the elimination of that one station was a big impact. So I applaud you. Again, I will say, I've never seen things move so fast as they have, which I guess in times of need, you do what you have to do. And these gentlemen have done a fantastic job. I, I look forward to what comes out of this relationship and what the future holds for the fire service in western Nevada County. And, and we hopefully appreciate your support also. Thank you.
Thank you Sam. Michael, you've had your time. You've had your three minutes. Can you do it very quickly? It's only one time.
It's very quickly. The other caution that I had or concern was making sure that it's, this is transparable in the sense of being tracking for county time and staff time on this project, establishing a PU number from the very beginning, so that this process, again, is, is transparent and duplicatable down the road, adding other fire districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Here we go.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Whitler, and I sit on the Rough and Ready Fire Board. I'd like to echo a lot of the comments today regarding thanking the people that have been on the committee, thanking the board. Some of you I've not met before. I've had the pleasure of knowing I've had the pleasure of knowing Sue Hook for decades now, and I thank you for not blocking my phone calls. Lisa, you've done a wonderful job working with the committee. Caleb Martin, and of course, these two guys over here couldn't have done it without everybody's input. What we've been doing is, it was almost insurmountable at first. I know over a year ago, it was difficult just to go through town without getting tomatoes thrown at me. And I know Tom Nelson who sits on the board with me, he'd have to go get his mail in the middle of the night because we couldn't be seen in public. So we were, and still kind of are, the poor kids on the block. But you have all our support, and I know that the plans we have, they're not only for efficiency, but also enhancements. So you'll be seeing a better, faster, stronger outcome of what we're doing. I guarantee it. So thank you all.
Thank you, Doug.
Just one quick on that note. That little fire, that little fire board, they scrambled from day one looking about how to protect their community. So it can't go without being said that the work done inside Rough and Ready and that board, I mean, we, looking at all avenues, I mean, we, you put on town halls, you really, so I just want that to go without saying because these guys really, they care and they love their community and they want to make sure everyone was protected. So they get a real kudo for the work they've done.
Okay. Any other public comment? Madam Clerk?
Chair, yes. We received eight emails in support of this item and the funding, the gap funding from S.R. Jones, Executive Director of LAFCO, Karen Lilly, District 2 resident, Vivian Hodges, District 2 resident, Catherine Hudson, District 1 resident, Kathleen Hoff, District 2 resident, Carol Finley, District 4 resident, Rick Waller, District 2 resident, and Georgia Martenson, District 4 resident. And just so the public knows where all the board members did receive those emails, and they will become part of the public record.
Thank you, Julie. All right. With that, I will close the public portion of it and bring it back to the board. I bring it back to our Ad Hoc Committee, who has done so much work. And if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion from them.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, District 4.
An ecstatic yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
And District 2.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you to everybody here. All right. At this time, we are going back into closed session.
So Chair Schofield, I would suggest a picture. This is very picture-worthy moment, and it would be wonderful to get your Ad Hoc and fire personnel with the board members for a picture before going to Ad Hoc.
Very good. Grab the Chiefs.
Yeah, Bruce.
Go get it. I'm not tall enough. I was like, I'm not tall enough. Well, Pat should be in that photo.
Yeah, there you go. Turns like they just gave you a million dollars. Hi, how are you? How are you? Good.
Pat, you need to go get in that photo, and he'll take the photo. No, no, no.
A broad spectrum, we want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So, the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So, the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So, when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So, whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So, what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So, a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack, it could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes, I have an insulin pump, right? And so, that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So, what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So, we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready, they were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So, on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So, it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so, I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So, we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So, absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So, we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number, it'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so, as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So, if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1, we're here to support you.
One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace Nixle and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth, it can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So, please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum, we want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So, the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So, the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So, when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So, whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So, what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So, a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack, it could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes, I have an insulin pump, right? And so, that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So, what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So, we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready, they were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So, on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So, it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so, I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So, we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So, absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So, we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number, it'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so, as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered Community Emergency Preparedness Plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the Ready Phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the Ready Phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was no time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor, who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece. And it's simply that, it's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to "go" when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece. And it's simply that. It's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace Nixle and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
The 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really, what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really, anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Alyssa Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine.
All right, we'll reconvene this meeting of the Nevada County Supervisors, the regular meeting of August 8th, 2023. And the first item that we need to take care of is to have our county council read us back into regular session and out of closed session.
Thank you, Chair Schofield. And so the board did meet in closed session on Agenda Item 234068 on the second piece, and a direction was given to staff.
Thank you, Kip. And with that, we are going to our first scheduled item of the afternoon, and that is a resolution to create and establish the Nevada County Youth Commission with an effective date of August 8th, 2023, and ratify the bylaws of the Nevada County Youth Commission. This is an exciting time. And I'm going to turn it over to our CEO, Allison Lehman, to kick us off.
Thank you, Chair Schofield, members of the board, and members of the public. Thank you so much for being here. We are thrilled to introduce this item today. Before we hand it over to Mr. Grover, who will be leading the presentation with his student colleagues, I'd like to go ahead and provide Supervisor Bullock and Supervisor Swarthout an opportunity for some opening remarks. Both of them were the champions behind this initiative and have worked with the students as this program has evolved over the summer, and we welcome their thoughts.
Very good. Hardy, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. I'm so excited to be a part of this, and it was so fun to be a part of these conversations with our youth commission leaders that are in the room and all the adult mentors. It was such an honor and a privilege to sit down with you and talk to you about what affects you, what you want to focus on in our county, and how you are going to lead this process and build the framework to become part of our decision-making paradigm here at the county and the leadership at the county level. And I know we're going to have a presentation from you, and we're going to have more comments, and the board will probably have some questions. But I just wanted to say thank you to you, to your parents for contributing and allowing you the time to come here before us, and all the adult people that have contributed to this. And Jeff, you're leading this charge, and you did an excellent job convening us. And I think we met four times, is that right? Correct, yep. And so we sat down and talked about everything that is going on in our county. And I had some of the most enlightening discussions, thinking back on my time growing up here and then learning about what is important to you and what you want to do to make a change in your community. I'll note that what we worked on together was really trying to construct a framework. It's not necessarily solving issues that are facing us today, but rather building a framework for a permanent solution and bringing those voices into the county process. I did just briefly want to mention all of the community leaders that came together. So I just am going to list the names really quickly, if I could, Chair. Jennifer Singer with Bright Futures for Youth, who's here today. Supervisor Swarthout and I were part of the ad hoc, which was an honor. Mary Jane from YMCA, Youth and Government. Ally Lightfoot from KBMR. Joe DiAndrea, who's a retired educator, workforce development coordinator. Daniela Fernandez, who's on Nevada City Town Council. Marty Lombardi. Noah Levinson. Andy... Thank you for that. Shannon Glaze, and of course, Allison Lehman. So thanks to each and every one of you. With that, I think we could turn it over to the students.
Well, maybe to Lisa.
Or to Lisa. Thanks.
I think Hardy said it all. But I just, I really want to take the opportunity to thank all of these kids who are sitting in here today. They spent their whole summer doing this. They weren't at the river with their friends. They, you know, they weren't working other jobs. They were here giving back and contributing to their community. And it's greatly appreciated. When Allison asked me to be part of the subcommittee, I was kind of looked at her blankly. I'm the only person up here who doesn't have kids. But she said, I like how you talk to the kids. So hopefully, you guys appreciated some of my smart-alky comments at times. But I know that when you're 16, they're not funny. But I was in good company with Mr. Dellis there, who, going back and forth. So anyway, thanks for all that you guys have done. I really look forward to hearing from you all today. I know a few of your parents, and I've run into them over the last month. And what I always say is, good parents bring about good kids. So thanks to all of your folks for helping out as well. So I look forward to hearing from you guys.
And is it Tommy? You seem to be sitting in the big spot there. And it's good to have somebody whose name I recognize, who is often sitting in that seat. So Tommy, I'm going to turn it over to you for the presentation.
Chair Schofield and honorable board members, good afternoon, and thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Tommy Grover, and I am one of 14 interns at the county that has been working to develop a youth commission. We're here before you today to present the outline of the commission to you, along with showing you some of the work we did in hopes that you guys pass the resolution. Now, each member of our team is going to come up and introduce themselves individually.
All right, hello. My name is Lillian Boy, and I'm going to be a sophomore at Nevada Union High School.
Hi, my name is Sean Chilton, and I'll be a junior at Nevada Union High School.
Hi, my name's Soleika Denise, and I'll be a junior at Nevada Union High School.
Hi, my name is Ari Funk, and I'm going to be a junior at Nevada Union.
My name is Alex Hubbard, and I'm going to be a sophomore at North Point.
Hello, my name is Adam Lee, and I will be a senior at Sierra Academy of Expeditionary Learning.
Hi, my name is Daniel Malagani. I'm going to be a sophomore at Sierra Academy of Expeditionary Learning.
Hi, my name is Justin Mettler, and I'll be a junior at Nevada Union High School.
Hi, my name is Haley Metzger, and I'm going to be a senior at Nevada Union High School.
Hello, my name is Sam Ovi, and I am going to be a junior at Godoty.
Hello, I'm Annie Pickin, and I just graduated from Sierra Academy of Expeditionary Learning.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Rist, and I'm going to be a junior at Nevada Union.
My name's Anna Talia Ferro Watson, and I'm going to be a junior at Nevada Union.
Wonderful. Welcome to all of you.
All right, so... All right, so again, I'm Daniel Malagani. And I want to go into the background a little bit. The youth commission is comprised of local adolescents ages 14 through 19. And these future leaders are dedicated to working with Nevada County officials to advocate on behalf of our county's youth. This group of young people will collaborate with various stakeholders, cities, businesses, special districts, schools, and nonprofits in the county to ensure a widespread influence.
A question that our founding group has asked ourselves a lot is why a Nevada County Youth Commission? For our group, the youth commission is about advocacy. Advocating at the county level to ensure that all youth are represented is one of the biggest priorities that the youth commission is based on. Advocacy is going to look a lot different depending on issues facing teens at any given time. And something that has become very clear to our group is that we should not set an outlined agenda of topics to focus on for the future of the youth commission. The reason for this is because issues and topics of discussion change quite often. Mental wellness, discrimination, and drug addiction are issues that the founding group has identified as current and important to address. But we want to make it clear that these issues identified are what the founders use to drive our work. But the future youth commission could very well choose to work on other issues affecting youth at that time. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, 1 in 6 U.S. youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year, while 50.6 of youth received treatment in 2016. Nearly 1/3 experienced serious psychological distress that interferes with their daily life. Now pertaining to addiction, there's more than 31 shops across western Nevada County that supply smoke and vape products. According to the law, you have to be 21 years old to purchase these products. But a lot of the time, adults are willing to purchase products for youth. And sometimes, youth can even obtain fake IDs and things like that to obtain those products. Since the beginning of our time working together, the founders have worked to identify the scope and means of our advocacy. The founders have identified two areas of work to ensure the need of youth in our county are met. To the Board of Supervisors, the youth commission will offer their advice and experience on youth-related issues to create potential plans of action for the county. The other role that the commission will serve is as a convener. Within Nevada County, there are numerous county resources, nonprofit organizations, and businesses geared toward youth. But oftentimes, as youth trying to identify those resources, it can be very difficult. By making connections with these different resources, such as Bright Futures for Youth, YMCA, Parks and Recreation, Health and Human Services, mental health providers, and school districts, the youth commission will be able to gather all of these resources and put them into one single platform where youth in our county can go to identify the resources. If the youth commission is adopted by you, we'll create this platform using social media, community outreach, and a website to promote the resources to the community. community outreach, and a website to promote the resources to all youth in the county.
Hi, again, my name is Tommy Grover, and I'm going to walk you guys a little bit through the process of the founders. So, we're going to start off with our research piece. We researched a lot of other counties' youth commissions to use as sort of a blueprint for what we were doing while also putting our own mark on it, so it stayed specific to our county. An example of this was in our bylaws. We used a lot of similar language and guidelines that we found within other counties' bylaws, but put our own mark on it and made sure that it was individual to what exactly we were doing. For the outreach piece, we developed relationships with a lot of our department heads here, spreading the word through them, while also learning from their expertise and applying it where we could in our work. We also spoke on county radio on KNCO and presented at county meetings. To gain valuable insight and recommendations for the establishment of the commission, we attended steering committee meetings with community members of organizations involved with the youth to advise us in the establishment of it. And for the very creation of it, the founders developed a mission and purpose to serve as the basic for the work completed. This was the bylaws, resolution, and staff report. A layout for social media and a website for the commission was also created. Youth commissioners will be provided with opportunities to delve into leadership roles, expanding their skill set while also advocating for the youth at the same time. An example of this can be what us founders got to do with job shadowing. For example, I and a group of colleagues got to shadow DA Jesse Wilson, public defender Carrie Klein, and Jamie Hogenson from county council, and spend the day at the courthouse learning the inner workings of the justice system.
Hi, I'm Anna, and I was able to shadow the Director of HHSA, Ryan Grover, and the Chief Fiscal Administrative Officer for HHSA, Aaron Metler. This eye-opening experience helped me to discover the various resources for youth, including Medi-Cal, children's behavioral health, and more, all of which will be beneficial to the future Youth Commission when they work to assist young people in connecting resource to need.
I'm Mackenzie. I began my day with CEO Allison Lehman. Following that, we had a very informative and helpful meeting with Supervisor Hook. Then I spent some time with Senior Management Analyst to the Board, Jeff Thorsby. During that time, I was able to see the steps a board item goes through. We specifically looked at our current item. To end my day, I shadowed the Director of the Office of Emergency Services, Craig Griesbach. While with him, we were able to go to the Greenwaste Facility and the new grant project sites, all of which showed how the county operates in many different ways and different levels of county operation.
Hello, my name is Adam Lee. For my job-shadowing opportunity, I had the chance to go on a ride-along with the Sheriff's Department. I had several constructive conversations with local deputies and peace officers on what led to their specific career path. We visited the local jail, an evidence locker, a dispatch call center, and many other facilities frequently used by law enforcement. It showed me just how many resources that our county has, and I found it to be a very beneficial experience. As the Youth Commission, we aim to serve as a convener, connecting the county's youth with organizations and resources who hold stake in the community's future. While forming the program's foundation, the most challenging aspect became reaching the largest possible youth demographic. As the Youth Commission, we will work diligently to provide a foundation that raises awareness to prominent issues facing teen mental health.
I'm Ari Funk, and I helped develop the purpose and the mission for the Youth Commission. The founders worked diligently to create a purpose and a mission for the Youth Commission. They utilize the resources of our county to gain a widespread understanding of government dynamics and issues facing our youth. This led to the development of the Youth Commission's purpose, which is to serve as a bridge between the youth and the Board of Supervisors while advocating for Nevada County youth and providing recommendations to the Board of Supervisors to facilitate positive change. Our mission is to identify, connect, and advocate for the issues facing youth in Nevada County.
Going into the mechanics of the commission, all commissioners must be 14 to 19 years of age at the beginning of their term, must reside and/or attend school within Nevada County. Terms will be one year from July 1st to June 30th, with a maximum of four terms. The Board of Supervisors will be the approving body for the appointment of 7 to 14 commissioners. We will use flyers, partnerships, and multimedia to gain community support and spread information. This can also be done through the schools. The commission is budgeted at $67,000 with an estimated cost of $91,000. The budget will come out of the county executive office. The budget gap will be filled by looking for savings in the county executive office and human resources budgets. If the gap remains at the end of fiscal year 2324, an amendment to the county executive office budget will be requested. The main uses of the budget have been split into four primary categories. A part-time advisor pay, commissioner stipends set at $50 per regular meeting, with trucky residents getting a 20% increase to account for additional travel expenses. Events and commission work. This includes but is not limited to trainings, conferences, or events hosted or in partnership by the Nevada County Youth Commission. Outreach. This should be used for any booth items, necessary media design subscriptions, technology needed for outreach work, and merchandise that could come with a potential profit.
With the counsel of Jeff Dellis and Karen Mueller, county employees and stakeholders, the founders worked to establish the structure for Youth Commission this summer. By adopting the Nevada County Youth Commission's resolution, the vision for our future can be a reality. Upon approval, work with the clerk of the board will begin to officially establish the Youth Commission. Advertisements and applications for commission positions will be sent out, interviews will be held, and commissioners will be selected by this fall, website, media, and other outreach will become active, and regular monthly meetings will begin.
Lastly, we want to give a huge thank you to our advisors, Karen Mueller and Jeff Dellis, along with the other county officials and stakeholders that helped us along the way. Under your guidance, the Youth Commission, one of the only programs in Nevada County that will represent, advocate, and communicate with all youth, was created. Next, we're going to have a slideshow with pictures of us doing some of our work live for you.[1047.93]
...you here, and we'd like to hear from what you have to say about our Youth Commission.
Well, thank you so much Chair Schofield and the entire board for allowing me to participate today from my home in Big Valley. It's great to be with all of you and just a voice by support for the resolution and creation of the Nevada County Youth Commission. Much of my work in Sacramento has been focused on rural education. I am Vice Chair of the Education Committee in the Assembly, and I value our youth a great deal, and this is very exciting to have an organized way to hear their voices heard. And I just want to thank every one of them that spent their summers this summer working so hard, not just for themselves, but to be a voice for the youth in the future of Nevada County as well. So, just thank you so much to the youth and their parents. I'm a mother of three, so I know how summers are busy. So, thank you so much for taking your time out to do this. I also want to just thank the county staff because that's how we heard about this great work, coming through a meeting with Jeff Thorsby and the excitement from your community. So, just again, thank you so much for allowing me to be here with you today as you start this journey, and I'm excited to see what you come up with and how I can be helpful in my office as well in Sacramento as we move forward. You are the future, and it's exciting to see what's next for all of us. So, thank you so much for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you, Megan.
And yes, Yolanda is there, so she will have certificates in person for all of you, all of the youth that worked so hard this summer.
Oh, that's great. That's great. And I envision a trip to Sacramento for the commission in the future. I can see that.
Well, I'd be very happy to host and take everyone to lunch and tour tour. So, get ahold of Yolanda. She can make all that happen.
Thank you, Megan. And Yolanda will do a photo op at the end of this if that'll work for you. Okay, Megan. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. So, you've obviously done a lot of work here, so now it gets down to the business of the board. And what I'd like to do is bring it back to our ad hoc committee and begin with Heidi.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge that I had a slight misstep, and I only read the first page because I kept looking over at Scott, who is one of our advisors, Scott Lay, our Superintendent of Schools. So, I missed a few names I'm going to read those. So, the other additional Youth Steering Committee adults who were present are Lauren Tapia, Katie Olling, obviously Jeff Dellis, Karen Mueller, Jennifer Winders, Scott Lay, our Superintendent of Schools, and Terry Baxter. So, I just wanted to publicly thank them and acknowledge their presence and their contribution. So, thank you so much. You know, I'm just so proud. When I sat through those meetings, it was so inspirational for me to see people your age willing to step up, be part of local government, part of civic engagement. The decisions that we make up here affect everybody's quality of life in the place that we call home here in Nevada County. And so, you now have a voice, hopefully, with our support, a voice in that process. And I welcome you to engage your own community and help bring forward any of the problems that you need to solve to the board for our engagement and our insights. So, thank you for taking the time to put it all together, and I appreciate that.
Heidi, Lisa?
I'll just echo Heidi's comments. You know, it's obviously a lot of work went into this. Your presentation was so impressive. We, you know, we sit up here and we see presentations all day long from different organizations, and the fact that probably none of you have ever really done this before, and how quickly you learned and the quality of the work that you did is just fantastic. So, I look forward to moving forward with the Youth Commission. I think, you know, for, at least I can only speak for myself sitting up here, but I'm not real in touch with the youth of our community, but your voice is so important because in the long-term decisions that we make, which might not seem relevant to you today, affect your future, and it affects the future of this whole community, and you guys are all a big part of that. So, thanks for all the work that you've done, and I look forward to when the commission is formed, hopefully coming to some of your meetings and watching the work that everybody does and the impact that you're going to have for the youth and all of the community, not just the youth, but all of the community. So, thanks again.
Lisa, Sue?
No, this is another exciting opportunity that I see for the county and the youth to come together and help make decisions that are going to be in your future. I love the diversity on your group. I see agriculture. I see exponential learning students. I see juniors. I mean, this is very exciting. Curiosity, how many of you all knew each other before you came here? Oh, see, that, look, you just, this whole new group of people, met new people and came together to collaborate. That's very exciting. I mean, that's really what it's all about, is collaborating to make things work. And we see that happen here at the county all the time, and now you guys get to be a part of that. Or, I'm sure where we vote with that, I shouldn't say that. But I'm just saying, though, this is exciting to me because your voice is important. You are who is going to be here in 20 years when we make decisions. You know, we make area plans. We do things in our communities with that long-range thoughts in our process, right? And you are the ones that are going to be living that. And so, we're always trying to think ahead, and this is just a wonderful opportunity. Thank you for taking your summer, and I want to thank all your parents for supporting you in this endeavor. I'm sure you missed a vacation or two and some other adventures, but I think this is going to be a lifelong-lasting experience. I don't think any of you will probably come to forget, and I think you'll use it somewhere in your future. So, again, congratulations and all to you for the work you've done, and thanks for bringing it here in such a wonderful presentation. You guys did a great job.
Well, you can hear a lot of the same stuff from me. Fantastic job, all of you. Really great presentation, nice pictures, great explanation, very clear about what you're planning to do. I love that you are coming to it with an open mind. So, you've already identified issues that you know are important to you and your colleagues, your friends and folks you work, you go to school with, but you're keeping it open for what other new issues might come up, too. It's so important to us that we have a formal process like this to hear from you. You know, I can hear from my kids' friends' kids, or their my friends' kids' kids, and we can get individual input as supervisors, but those just can be anecdotal information, right? And you guys are going to be gathering data. It's going to be more like, this is really what we're hearing. It's not just one or two people. It's a bunch of people who are saying this, and that helps us to take action. So, I really want to encourage you to continue to reach out to people you know and figure out how you're going to do that with surveys or whatever, so that we really get a full picture of your voices here at the county. Also, want to just comment on the fact that you aren't, I believe, you know, you can talk to your advisors, but you aren't restricted to just the issues you're seeing in high school right now or that you think are going to see in college. I know when I was your age, the issues of the environment became really important to me. And that, you know, that's an issue that a lot of young people care about. Climate change is an issue that a lot of young people care about. So, if you want to take on policy issues that are bigger than your age group but will affect you, you can raise those to us, too. It helps us to know what you're thinking about, what you want the world to look like as you grow up in it. So, thank you for this great start. I'm really looking forward to hearing what you come up with, and I'm always available to speak with any of you if you'd like. Thank you so much.
And I would actually echo what Heidi says. You can do what you want with this commission, and it could go into some amazing places. And you just set my mind on this today in that I was thinking from the beginning, okay, what are we going to do with a Youth Commission? What purpose will they serve here? And in fact, when I met with some of you, Sean, and some of the others of you, you asked me what I saw your role being, and I'm thinking, well, you can help us. You can give us advice. You're welcome to sit on my municipal advisory committee, especially if you're from my district, District Two. And then you come up with this, and you say, hey, here's what we want to work on: mental wellness, discrimination, and addiction. You guys are playing with the big boys here, so, and girls, excuse me. But it just opens my mind up to what I may not realize, the issues that you're facing in your schools today and the youth of today and what you can do with it. You've got us as a board up here supporting you. You've got the Superintendent of Schools in the back. You've got Assemblywoman Dolly. Senator Dolly, I'm sure, the same way. You have a lot of support, and we're looking forward what comes out of this commission. I think it's going to be very, very impressive. Any other comments before we move on? CEO, would you like to say something, Allison?
No, just like all of you, just very impressed with the work over the summer. And I just want to point out, the process that the students took is the same process that our department heads go through in terms of research, preparing an item for the board, talking with the CFO, talking with department heads in terms of forming their recommendations, and then, as you saw today, presenting the item to all of you. So, just very proud of all their work and how professional they all were.
Thank you, Allison. And with that, I'm going to open up the public comment period of this meeting. Please come forward. You have three minutes. Give us your name and district, if you would. Jennifer?
Hello. This is an exciting day. Thank you, Chair Schofield and honorable members of the board. I actually wrote something, so, you know, I ramble. So, I'm trying to keep it tight here. So, my name is Jennifer Singer. I am Executive Director of Bright Futures for Youth, which provides services and support to Nevada County youth through the Friendship Club, the Neo Youth Center, and the SAFE program serving youth experiencing homelessness. I have had the pleasure to serve youth in our community since I myself was a teenager. In fact, it was that early experience that inspired me to return to this community and dedicate my career to advancing youth voice and support. Nearly 30 years later, I stand here today to tell you I wholeheartedly support the creation of the Nevada County Youth Commission. Youth deserve an elevated opportunity and platform to share their thoughts, points of view, and vision for their community today and into the future. I am proud to see Supervisor Bullock and Swarthout and CEO Allison Lehman championing this idea of this commission with the intention to give youth a voice in our county government. Now more than ever, our youth are struggling with mental health, substance use, and an uncertain future. That is the challenging news. The good news is that we have youth who are more tuned in, want to share their points of view, want to see positive change, and have opinions and points of view that are critical to shaping the future of this community. We at Bright Futures for Youth support the formation of the Youth Commission and look forward to many opportunities to partner with them in service to our next generation. I commend the Board of Supervisors for considering this focus on youth. After all, they are the ones we will all be counting on soon enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hey, Scott.
All right. Chair Schofield, members of the board, thank you. I want to commend these amazing future leaders of Nevada County. I had a wonderful time working with them. Makes you feel good going to bed at night that our future is in great hands wherever they may end up. Strongly support the team here and urge the approval of the Youth Commission in Nevada County, and certainly support my office's resources to help them achieve their goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Don Harris, and I am the former Director of the Oakland School for the Arts and the San Francisco School of the Arts. And I've been a Nevada County resident since 2019, and I can't tell you how positive it's been my working with youth and the youth commissions I've seen. This group is really doing something very special. They know process. They know each other, and they know what needs to be done. And I'm just very impressed with your energy and your positivity, and you're going to do a lot of good things in this county. I'm also working with the Nevada County Arts Council here, and we've recently been distributing grant money around the different parts of the northern state. And there are some other initiatives going on that might want to partner with you guys, so let's look at that in the future. This is going to be a bigger movement than maybe we just think. I think you have great leadership, and I think collaboration is a really big deal about what we're trying to achieve here. This is a little bit personal for me. Many of you watch Euphoria, by any chance? People aware of the show? Kind of an important show on HBO. Angus Cloud, who just passed away last week, was a student of mine, a close friend. I knew his family. Talk about mental health issues. I think you guys are on it when you talk about that. It's extremely important. So, I'm here to support you in any way I possibly can. Some of the arts programs I was talking about, let's see how we can collaborate and get even more youth involved. There's a lot to be done here. This is a great county, I'll tell you. Every time I come here, something special is happening. And for $91,000, you're going to get a really good buy. This is a really good deal for $91,000. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Hello. Thank you to you students who gave up your summers to do this important and valuable work, and thank you to Allison Lehman and you Board of Supervisors for wisely eliciting their intelligence and insights. My name is Allison Rivers-Samson. As a parent of a local high schooler and a member of the Nevada Joint Union High School District, Local Accountability and Local Control and Accountability Plan for two years, and social work intern at one of our high schools last year, I've had the joy and privilege of learning a great deal from our wonderful local high schoolers about their needs. Everything I heard in this quality presentation speaks to much of what I learned from them. Mental health, discrimination, and addiction as their primary issues, all of these are intertwined. As shared at the beginning of the presentation, one of the most significant issues our teens face is mental health challenges, which is affected by discrimination and sometimes results in addiction. This is not exclusive to our community. In the spring of this year, the Centers for Disease Control issued a warning of alarming trend data identifying negative mental health for teens as a nationwide trend. I commend our students and public officials for considering these issues in our community. It's probably been a number of years since many of us have been in high school. A lot has changed. It's important that we listen to what our youth request and to respond to their needs, recognizing that they are the experts on their lived experience. I strongly support the resolution for the Nevada County Youth Commission as a valuable asset to our community, and I urge you to do so as well.
Thank you, Allison.
Chairman Schofield, Board members, good afternoon. My name is Joe DiAndrea. I'm in District Four, Penn Valley, and I am a retired California school administrator. And obviously, I'm here to support this Youth Commission. I had the opportunity to spend time with these young people this past summer on three occasions, working with them, and I have to say that their dedication and their passion and their commitment to this program is just outstanding. If you ever wondered where the youth of today are going, right here, you look at these guys and you realize there's a lot of hope out there. Nevada County Government does things right. I had the opportunity of doing the Citizens Academy for 12 weeks this past spring, and I saw what Nevada County does behind the scenes, and Nevada County Government does it right. By supporting these young adults, you demonstrate that Nevada County really does value our 14- to 20-year-old residents. You value their future. Consequently, you value our future by valuing theirs. So, I wholeheartedly would recommend that you approve this program, and I think there's going to be some phenomenal things come out of this group. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Good afternoon, Chair Schofield and Board of Supervisors. My name is Karen O'Hara. I'm the Executive Dean of the Sierra College Nevada County Campus, and I'd just like to, on the fly, speak in support of this measure, of this commission. And the other thing I'd like to just offer up is, as the local community college here, we are really, I've been in the position one year, and I've just really been trying to work with more and more commissions and more and more agencies, working with youth. We have Godoty on campus, Godotion here. Anyway, and so, this outreach, I'm really looking forward to working with this group, not just to help promote the group, but also to hear what the youth in our community want and what the needs are, what gaps we can help fill. The other thing I just wanted to say is that for 25 years, I've been a professor of child psychology, and this level of engagement, activism, and empowerment for youth is just mind-blowing. I'm extremely proud of you guys and excited for you to do this work in our community. And I just want to offer the resources that Sierra College has, and come by.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Is there anyone else? Anybody online?
We have no callers, Chair, and I did not receive any emails.
Very good. And I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board, and I'll bring it back for any final comments and a resolution, if we're ready.
I would make the motion that we approve enthusiastically the Nevada County Youth Commission today.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
I second that motion.
Second Supervisor Bullock. Adam Clark?
Thank you, District Four.
District Four, yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
And District Two.
Yes. All right. Okay, I think Yolanda has some certificates, and we're going to do a photo op up front here, okay?
If you are a member of the Steering Committee, could you please come join us for a picture?
Director of Office of Emergency Services, Craig Griesbach. This is an informational presentation from Pacific Gas and Electric Company regarding their wildfire emergency preparedness projects, initiatives, and related activities. Brandon Sanders, PG&E, Sierra Division Government Affairs. Craig?
Good afternoon, Chair Schofield, members of the board. Craig Griesbach, Director of Emergency Services for Nevada County. As you all know all too well through experience of several emergency events during recent years, our utility infrastructure are critical lifelines for our rural community. Ensuring they continue to be hardened, enhanced, and maintained are a high priority for us and our utility partners. As we head deeper into fire season, it's even more important. Our team partners closely with PG&E and communicates with them regularly on measures that they are taking to harden infrastructure, implement enhanced power line safety settings, enhance vegetation management programs, and align their efforts with our wildfire mitigation projects overall throughout the county. It is my pleasure to introduce PG&E's Sierra Division Government Affairs Representative, Brandon Sanders, to provide your board with a brief presentation regarding these efforts and answer any questions that you may have.
Welcome, Brandon.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, Chairman Schofield, members of the board. Pleasure to be here for you again today for what's seemed to be becoming an annual event. Certainly appreciate Craig and all of his team and the OES for their partnership on a constant basis. We work very closely together, and you really have an asset in Craig and his team, so really appreciate that. So, as we've done in years past, I'm here today for a number of reasons. One is to share an update on our wildfire mitigation efforts, something that we have been very focused on in the last, say, five to 10 years as a company. We've made some great progress, and I look forward to sharing some of that with you here now in this slide presentation. Of course, anytime I come before the board, I'm happy to field any questions near the end related to this or any other matters pertaining to PG&E across the county, and just really appreciate the opportunity and just want to commend the board for always being accessible and for bringing forward issues to my attention for me to address in partnership with our local teams. So, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I won't belabor the slide presentation so that we can save ample time for questions. In review, everyone in the room is keenly aware of the high fire threat facing this region and particularly Nevada County. This is an illustration of those areas within the county that are considered high fire threat by both the CPEC, CAL FIRE, and PG&E. Largely encompasses the entire county with the exception of, I guess, if you could call it the urban areas of Grass Valley and a few other pockets in the county, but the county at large is fully within that high fire threat district. fully within that high fire threat district. And that's essentially where we target our efforts, of course, for wildfire mitigation. Really, three key objectives year over year is to reduce wildfires or prevent wildfires and reduce ignitions. Of course, looking to lessen the impacts to our communities and customers as best we can and, of course, provide support to those customers who are facing things like outages and the like. One of the things that we've done, and if we were to look back, say, to 2018, there would maybe have been two or three dots on this map. We have now deployed nearly 30 weather stations throughout the county and eight high-definition wildfire detection cameras. What that allows us to do is have high visibility into field conditions and take appropriate action in terms of how we operate the grid to minimize risk and the threat of wildfire to your communities. The weather stations, that data is publicly available at pge.com/weather and anyone from the public can access those high-definition wildfire cameras at alertwildfire.org. Additionally, our cooperating agencies and the Fire Service and others have the ability to manipulate those cameras for their tactical purposes during an actual firefight. I'd like to speak a little bit about overhead system hardening. One unfortunate reality for Nevada County is given our last couple of winters, a lot of new equipment exists. Throughout the county, there was a lot of tree impact. In those recent storms, we found that trees were the primary driver of the damage we saw during those storm events. And so what we look to do as we replace that equipment is we're doing things such as installing stronger poles set deeper in the ground, going from wood crossarms to aluminum or composite crossarms, installing covered power lines where it makes sense versus the bare aluminum conductor that is essentially the industry standard. And what this does, it improves a lot of things. It mitigates the risk of wildfire, but it also improves reliability on the system and makes it more resilient in the face of adverse weather. This is a very basic illustration of where we've completed overhead system hardening around the county. As you can see, a lot of that was sort of in the population centers and on the edges of some of the major population centers. And that, through the end of 2022, amounted to 53 overhead line miles that have been hardened against adverse weather throughout the county. I'd like to talk a little bit about vegetation management. This is certainly a major topic of conversation across both my relationships with you all and certainly our customers in the community. We have an imperative to keep trees away from power lines. It's one of the highest risks we face in terms of operating an overhead electrical distribution system in Nevada County. We do a number of things to ensure that we're addressing those risks, including inspecting over 100,000 miles of power lines across the system. We look to prune or cut down more than 1 million trees per year, which a large portion of that is within Nevada County and the Sierra foothills generally. Of course, very focused on dead, dying, or hazard trees, those with some kind of defects or other environmental conditions that pose a risk. And also, one of the things we're doing now is we're targeting, we're being very targeted in doing additional tree trimming in areas where we have the most frequent outage activity. This is an illustration of the vegetation management work that's occurred throughout the county over the last year or so. As you can see, within those non-high fire threat districts, again, the population centers that aren't really heavily wooded, we've accomplished about 209 line miles, overhead line miles of vegetation management work. Within the high fire threat districts, we're going in excess of the minimum standard to four feet around the line for a total of nearly 1,700 line miles in the overhead treated with vegetation management prescriptions, again, to reduce the risk of wildfire. Oftentimes, and I often need to explain this to people, even though we're only targeting a four-foot clearance, what we really look to do is take that out to perhaps 10, 12, or 15 feet for a number of reasons. One, that accounts for the growth of the tree over the course of a season. And also, we're trying very hard, and it's kind of a bit of a growing pain for us, but we're making progress in reducing the number of entries we have to individual properties year over year. We're trying to really get as much work done in one or two visits versus, I know many of us, including myself, have had several entries year over year onto our personal properties and it can be impactful. And we're very focused on doing that to the point where we have convened a working group with the State Association of Counties and rural county representatives of California and meet regularly on that issue. Something around like what customers can expect when we're looking to do vegetation management work, we do attempt to contact homeowners by door knocks. If we're not able to do that, our vegetation management inspectors will typically leave a door hanger on the gate or on the door with a callback number. But essentially, the work needs to get done. It's very important that we're addressing hazard trees and overhangs and things like that, again, to mitigate the risk. And so we get that work done. And of course, we have periodic routines of the entire system, particularly in the high fire threat district, which happens more frequently than it would, say, in a place like down in the valley. The threat here is greater and so we do more frequent inspections as a result. One of the main topics of conversation lately is it relates to our enhanced power line safety settings. This is a new wildfire mitigation tactic that we've employed in the last couple of years, and as a result, we have reduced the number of reportable ignitions from our overhead equipment by 68%. Even more so, we have a 99% reduction in the size of fires caused from our overhead electrical equipment. And we certainly understand the inconvenience for a periodic outage poses to our customers, but it's very important to also acknowledge that it's effective, particularly in a heavily forested environment such as Nevada County. This is an infographic that we put together. It's very elementary, but as you can see, if an object, it could be a tree branch, it could be a turkey vulture, Canada goose, even a squirrel on top of a transformer, the moment a fault is sensed on the system, it'll turn the power off within one-tenth of a second. This eliminates the potential for wildfire ignition from that contact greatly. We actually did a tour two weeks ago of our Applied Technology Services installation in San Ramon where we demonstrated this in real time. And it was, I had never seen it personally myself, and it was very telling. You know, you have the settings deactivated, the branch hits the line, it sends an arc flash up the line which can cause pieces of metal to fall from the line and hit the duff on the ground. With the settings intact or in place, it's barely a poof and there's no heated material finding the ground. I didn't queue it up for this presentation, but for those listening and for members of county staff, we do have a YouTube channel that shows that live fire demonstration of enhanced power line safety settings. All you have to do is go to YouTube and search PG&E Enhanced Power Line Safety Settings. And about five or six, there's a few of them are kind of elementary. I don't want to call them cartoons, but they're infographic style like this. But then if you go down, the one that says ATS, Applied Technology Services, is actually the live fire demonstration. And it's very interesting to see. This is a collection of statistics related to enhanced power line safety settings in Nevada County. Every mile or every span of power line within the high fire threat district in Nevada County is enabled with enhanced power line safety settings. You can see the statistics there on the right. In 2021, the average outage length on an EPSS outage was 20 hours. We brought that down by about 20%. We continue to do so. As we get better at the patrol, we install additional sectionalizing devices and install things like fault indicators that speed up those patrol activities. We've also reduced the average number of customers impacted by almost half. So as you can see, we certainly acknowledge the impact of these outages, but there's no denying the fact that they're effective in mitigating wildfire. And you can see in the bottom right, there's a collection of causes. From time to time, there's an unknown cause because what can happen is a branch could momentarily contact the line and immediately fall to the ground, and it's often not readily apparent as we complete those patrols. So there are a large number of unknown causes. Those are, in our view, typically vegetative contact that makes it to the ground before the patrol's complete. We are working to improve reliability on these EPSS-enabled circuits, including additional tree trimming. Those fault indicators that I mentioned, these are essentially lighted switches that are placed in intervals along lines that are some of our highest performing EPSS circuits, and that allows expedited patrols so that we can ensure everything's intact before we re-energize those circuits. We're also installing a lot of animal guards on transformers and crossarms because animals, besides the vegetative contact, animal contact is typically what we see causing a lot of these EPSS outages. Going to public safety power shut-off, this is something that a lot of folks don't really talk about a whole lot anymore because we haven't had one in Nevada County for a number of years. I do recall, I think it might have been in 2017 or 2018, I presented to this Board during a public safety power shut-off when this facility was being surged on a generator. So we certainly understand how impactful those PSPS events were. We've taken a lot of actions to reduce the potential for those. And while they're not as common or likely as they were in the early years of our programming around this, it's still certainly a tool that we keep in our toolbox under extreme weather conditions. So just to sort of recap, the public safety power shut-off is a larger-scale proactive de-energization of our overhead equipment. Typically, when we find this confluence of weather conditions such as critically dry fuel moisture, extreme high winds, extreme low humidity, and we have now trained many, many of our field personnel on how to take accurate weather measurements to validate what we're seeing from our automated resources in the field. So we have checks and balances in place there to make sure that we've got the best information available. To clarify some of the differences between enhanced power line safety settings and public safety power shut-off, we are not able to provide advanced notification for an enhanced power line safety setting outage because it is an unplanned outage. So that's one of the key differences between a PSPS where we know the weather event's coming and we're able to provide advance notice two to three days before that were to occur. The good news is where the public safety power shut-offs were often multiple days, up to five or seven in some areas, these EPSS outages typically last around three hours or so. I always like to close on a couple of key items. First of those is customer resources. We have a lot of great information on our website, as you can see on the links here. I'd like to call out the PG&E Reported app. We have developed a proprietary app that customers can download to their smart devices, take a picture of a perceived hazard in the field, and that goes into a collection within our wildfire operations center and is reviewed in real time and responded to within 72 hours. A lot of times what we're finding is that folks are taking pictures of telephone lines with trees in them, which aren't as much of a concern for us. But whatever it ends up being, if there's a perceived hazard, encourage your community to download the Reported app and make us aware of it so that we can take action appropriately. We also partner closely with 211, and we're very proud of that partnership through the California Foundation for Independent Living Centers. And we have a really robust safety website, safetactioncenter.pge.com, that I always encourage folks to take a look at once or twice a year. Make sure your family and your neighborhood is prepared for the potential for an emergency event. So with that, I just have one more closing comment, and I know that there are a lot of questions and I look forward to fielding those. Just to kind of give a snapshot of some of the stuff beyond wires and pipes and all of those types of things, I'd just like to let everybody know that we're very present in the community. We do a lot of charitable giving throughout Nevada County. We're very proud to partner with a number of your organizations. I'm not going to list them here, but there's many, many nonprofit organizations, your chambers of commerce, a lot of different folks that we partner with and work with on key initiatives. And we're also very proud to have been able to donate a lightly-used snowcat to Nevada County Search and Rescue, so we're very proud of that as well. So with that, that ends my slide presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Who you want to start?
Well, I can. That good presentation, Brian. I really actually am appreciative. RCRC has put together a monthly meeting that we meet with PG&E. It's always really great to go over different issues. And I was fortunate to go to San Ramon and get to watch that in action. It was really kind of, it was quite eye-opening, the burst that comes when that limb hits the line versus when it shuts off and when it can run down the line where the fire can flow. It was really very interesting. So, and I know we're probably going to still hear some issues. You know, folks don't like being without their power. And you know that, Brandon, you're a phenomenal about returning my phone calls, and I always appreciate that. And working with my constituents, you're really great at doing that. I appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to look forward to the questions that come from the community. I think we're working on some of these issues. I know Rough and Ready was just out again a little while ago, but I would say all winter, we weren't out all winter, so that was exciting. Some of that vegetation is coming into play. I think, you know, the management that's happening there. And those new little, I'm going to miss this-
The fault indicators.
The fault indicators that are placed there now, which allows it to be quickly or more quickly-
Patrold.
Put back in service. So those, and those are in my districts in quite a few places now, which is exciting. And really interesting to have all the weather cameras up, which it really gives you a better opportunity to see where the bad weather is coming, from what direction is in the wind. I was very impressed with the size and scale of that room that has all the different mapping and placing and things that you do down there to be able to track where outages are or where they possibly could be coming out. It was really very interesting. There's a lot going on. So with that, I appreciate you being here and I appreciate, because I know there'll be some constituents that do have questions, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. And if I could just add one key detail, for the enhanced power line safety settings, those are disabled when fire season ends. So when we get ample rain, fuel moistures rise, we do turn those off and it goes back to normal configuration for
Thank you, Brandon. It's always, I always appreciate the updates that you bring. I appreciate you being here. And I, yeah, I don't know that those meetings that we've been having are monthly. I just got notice of another meeting coming up with the RCRC CSAC group, which I will be attending as well. And I hate to do this to you because I know you're so responsive and you're doing everything you can down here at our level, but the issues that I've had in my district have not gotten better and have extreme frustration. I still hear from my constituents on a regular basis, and I'll just run through them quickly because it's all the same stuff. But before I get into that, I would like to ask you to address the articles that have been in the papers recently saying that PG&E has decided that the veg management they're doing has not been effective, so they're not going to continue doing them. Can you address what that means for us?
Yes, I certainly can. That's a great question, Supervisor. Thank you. So many may have seen in the Wall Street Journal, I believe about a week ago, they published an article in regards to our enhanced vegetation management program and some findings that the level of investment we had placed into that was essentially not as effective in mitigating wildfire ignitions as our enhanced power line safety settings. So enhanced vegetation management was in place as we began to develop the safety settings. And we learned pretty quickly in the last couple of years that the more effective way to avoid wildfire ignitions is to have those settings in place versus what was a very aggressive tree removal tactic that we had employed for a number of years throughout the Sierra foothills and the coast range. And so it's, our vegetation management program is still very robust and shall continue. It's just going to be focused on our routine biannual inspections or annual inspections, maintaining those specific clearances of one to, one and a half to four feet. But we're not going to be in a posture of removing trees at the scale we were during the enhanced vegetation management program as a result of the comparative findings between those two tactics. I hope that answers your question.
It does. It's unfortunate. You're not done up here. It's not time to back off on that.
Well, we have taken the inventory from that enhanced vegetation management program, and that is now folded into our routine program. And what we do is we refer to those trees as monitor. So every, in the high fire threat district, we do multiple inspections every year. Those trees are inspected every year, and if their conditions deteriorate or we find that something such as soil moisture has caused it to lean in an unsafe manner, those will be addressed and we still have those in inventory. We are just focused more on refining our enhanced power line safety settings as those are-
Okay.
Highly effective in person.
So the problem there, and again, I want to just run down the things I've been hearing from my constituents, but the problem there is that when you still have a bunch of limbs hanging on the lines or too close to the lines, you're going to continue to set off those systems that you're placing on there. So you're not going to resolve the problem. You're going to continue to have lots and lots of power outages until those trees are removed. So what I've been hearing regularly from my constituents is there are still lots and lots of trees that slash, laying on the ground that PG&E has not picked up. I understand now that the reason that they've been asking, asked to cut them up into six-foot sections and leave them there is so that they cannot be used for timber and logging trucks cannot pick them up. So people who have them on their private land and now have to pay for removing them can't even get them removed. I've heard that from several people. The phone, the phone system that you have is often out of service. And I've had two constituents who've gotten calls from your call center or central office somewhere, and they leave a message saying, "We can't leave you a phone number. We will try you two more times. But if you don't pick up when we call you," and there's no name on there, your complaint will be discontinued. And now they're being told, my constituents are being told, PG&E will no longer come and pick up the trees that are laying under the lines, next to the lines, that they took out many, many months ago and committed to take out. They're simply not removing trees anymore that they cut down. So, you know, if you know something that I don't, I'd appreciate hearing that, but I have lots of constituents now with massive fire danger on their lands, worse than it was before, because now that stuff's on the ground. Again, many of them, like I experienced, they're leaving them right near the power line. So what they've achieved by that, I don't know. near the power line. So what they've achieved by that, I don't know. There are still, I'm still here for constituents and seeing it in my own neighborhood, that as we've told you before, consultants come out or contractors come out and they take off a couple limbs, they take down one tree, they leave. Another one comes out, they take care of two feet on the road, they leave. There are still trees with red dots, blue dots, green dots, yellow dots slash on the ground. It's this continued cycle of them coming out and doing a little bit of work and then leaving. And now we're hearing all of that is stopping. So there still is a huge problem out there. It's now on the ground. It's almost impossible to, and expensive to remove. And PG&E is not meeting its commitment to take care of that. And I will be raising this again at the RCRC CSAC meeting. I cannot tell you how enraged my constituents are when they say, "I can't get someone to pick up a phone. It takes me months to reach someone." And then when they do, they say, "I'm so sorry. We just can't do anything." So I, you know, sorry to lay that all on you personally.
Please don't apologize.
And then I, this whole other issue, I hope that we'll get into it another time. But what happened up at Hell's Half Acre, I'm assuming you're aware of that, just disastrous, absolutely disastrous and no excuse for it. And I don't know that we're going to see any resolution to that anytime soon. So those are, I'm just relaying you what I'm hearing. I'm going to keep hearing them until something happens. And I'm just beyond disappointed that the company as a whole is not at least sticking to its commitment to clean up that slash the way they said they would a year ago. Thank you.
I fully understand, and I will carry that back. And I know that the CSAC RCRC collaborative group is very much a good venue for you to bring that forward. I certainly try, you know, when I feel these concerns from you all. But the scale of the problem is probably a little far beyond my ability to influence in a large way. So I would encourage that collaboration at that level.
And thank you for being here to listen.
Of course, always, always happy to come before you.
Lisa?
Yeah, you know, I think that's kind of an interesting thing to listen to what you're having there versus the biggest issue I hear mostly, like I said, in my district is the power shut offs are the big thing. So that's really interesting. Haven't had as much vegetation issues.
And we haven't had a lot of power shut offs, but you're going to keep getting the power shut offs as long as there's still trees hanging on the lines.
Yeah. So, well, some of them aren't trees though. Like the last one was a bird. That's the other interesting thing. When you go out, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a tree. We had a big buzzard take the other one out. You know, he touched the things with his wings, I guess, and he got zapped and they got zapped. And so that's another thing they're looking at. In a lot of places, they're extending how the wires run to that something else you guys are working on, making the span shem bear.
Yeah, the longer cross arms, wider cross arms is a tactic we're using. On those, on those, we do, we do circuit, circuit reviews for, it's probably not a good way to describe it, but the higher performing circuits, we do circuit reviews frequently to see, okay, where can we put bird guards? Where can we do more veg work? So that speaks to that. But you're fully within your right, as are your constituents, to have those concerns. And I've addressed them kind of one by one as they, as they drop into my inbox from your staff and others on your team. But I do understand the scale of the issue Supervisor, and you certainly have my support to the extent I can help, so.
Good. Because we don't always get to talk about all this, except for when we're sitting right here. So it's kind of, it's interesting to hear. I mean, I'm just saying for us, that's, for me, that's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Brandon and I spoke yesterday on the phone and I apologized upfront, saying this would probably be somewhat painful for him. So I appreciate you coming and, and, you know, being in the line of fire a little bit. So I would say that I haven't experienced the exact same issues of what Supervisor Hall has. I've had a few of them where I actually have reached out to our public works director, who I believe reached out to PG&E, and they were successfully cleaned up. So it doesn't make any sense to me while some things get taken care of and some things don't. So I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed. Is it a specific area? Are they just, are they not coming out into the much more rural areas, you know, because mine, the one that I was dealing with was a lot closer into town. So that, that's one issue hopefully you can maybe look into and get some answers back to in regards to the Hell's Half Acre. And I had spoken with Brandon and told him that that was going to come up. And so I've been sitting in on those every other week meetings that PG&E has been holding with the stakeholders and some of the property owners out there. And unfortunately, the same questions keep getting asked over and over again with absolutely no answers. So I'm hopeful after our discussion that at the next meeting, you can bring back some answers and there potentially can be some more information coming forward about what PG&E is going to be do, be doing to help remediate that site, what the end result appearance wise is going to be, because I think that's a huge concern. And, you know, when this whole thing was presented to me back, I think in February when we met, there was no discussion that PG&E was going to come in there and clear cut that whole property. And I think that has been the whole, the whole problem here is the lack of communication for what they were going to be doing out there. So hopefully moving forward, we can get more information to our constituents about it. And hopefully PG&E is going to be open to figuring out some solutions for, obviously they can't fix what's been destroyed out there, but there are some things that your company can do to make it better. And I'm hopeful that you will take that back to the powers that be that make those decisions because it's just not acceptable what's happened out there. And as a county, you know, we don't have a lot of recourse because we, this is, you're a public agency, so you're not, PG&E is not under the same control of a county project because of the CPUC oversight. But that is no excuse for what happened there. And hopefully they will be listening and we can fix this somehow. I mean, obviously, like I said, we're not going to, we're not going to fix what, what was destroyed, but there are some remedies, I think, that would make the community feel better and feel better about PG&E if they stepped up to the plate and helped us out. So hopefully we can continue to dialogue about that. I'm fortunate in my district, we do not have a lot of power outages. So all the work that's being done, like with the tree trimming, I think they've done a lot of work in District Three, probably much more than what's been done in District One or District Two, just based on what I see from driving around. So we are appreciative of that. Hopefully, you know, we're going to avoid any major tragedies up here in the next year based on some of the work that has been done. So thanks for being here.
Well, thank you for the comments. And I, I'm going to take some personal responsibility for the degree of detail you were given on that work. We met, a few of us met individually early in the year and we talked about that project. At the time, the information I had was that there would be some vegetation removal. It wasn't apparent to me at the time it was going to be on the scale that it was. And I know now that I need to ask more questions so that you all are fully informed and it doesn't come as a surprise to you in the future. Because if I had just asked more detailed questions or pressed the issue, you know, beyond just, you know, the basic explanation, I think we would have had a different outcome. So there was certainly a lesson learned on my part as well.
Arty?
Oh, sorry.
I guess I would just add on to the Hell's Half Acre, because I was at the first meeting that got called out there that Lisa, you couldn't be at. I mean, I, I don't even know how to respond to some of what you're saying. The destruction is that they destroyed cultural artifacts. They destroyed endangered species. They destroyed entire sections of soil that is unique to this area. It's just, you can't get that back. And there's really, I can't imagine why there wouldn't have been better communication about that all the way down the chain. And then I have to say that that one meeting they attended where there were 12, 10 PG&E guys out there agreeing to stop the work, agreeing to listen to the issues that were raised, agreeing to go walk through the area with the groups, and they turned around and they came back out there and finished clearing it off. So there's, I mean, there's zero trust. There's, they agreed to a bunch of stuff, looked like they were being good citizens, and then turned around and didn't. So, you know, that's pretty serious malfeasance. That's beyond a couple of conversations and trying to fix something. I don't, you know, we had a commenter this, the woman this morning who's asking for financial compensation to help fix what they can. But there are resources out there that are destroyed that we will never get back. And so I personally would like to see a discussion about the process, how you let us know where you're going to be and what kind of work you're going to be doing, and include our planning staff way in the beginning and be completely transparent about what the plans are. So that, that doesn't happen again, because that's the only thing we really can do with this.
Brandon, thanks for coming out. PG&E is only a portion of the District Five service territory and just the lower part down by Washington. You've been helpful in some of those rural communities like Washington and meeting me out there. And OES was out there as well with Paul. And we, we had talked about what serves that community and I really appreciate your support there. And I've also noticed, because I have a lot of ties here in Western County, that the PSPS issue has been drastically improved. I just had a couple of quick questions on the use or the funding of additional micro grids to when we do have issues, trees, whatever, storm power outages. Does PG&E have a funding or an implementation plan to install additional micro grid type of situation?
Well, we're certainly always looking for opportunities. I do know that we're looking at the deployment of the Tesla mega packs to some substations as kind of like a redundancy measure. I believe that might be happening in the near term in Placer as sort of a test case. So we're always looking for those opportunities because anything we can do to get some redundancy built into the system and in that way, we're looking to do that. I don't know of anything specifically planned for Nevada County at the moment, but it's certainly something that we have an entire team dedicated to. And there are projects moving through the process throughout the territory. I'm just not currently aware of any in Nevada County.
Okay. So if we, if we have them or believe that a community would benefit from them, bring those to you?
By all means, yes. I would love to, you know, work with you on those and put you in touch with the right people that can help you kind of lay that out and understand it better. So, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other question, kind of similar related to that is, there was a big push to underdo some utility underground work. Is that in some grant funding that PG&E put out, is that still a play for communities?
Absolutely. We're going to be undergrounding hundreds of miles of electrical distribution circuit in Nevada County in the coming years.
Is that, is that work undergoing environmental review right now?
Yeah, all the different dependencies that need to be in place, everything from securing land rights and easements. Some, in some cases, we're dealing with private driveways. And so we have to negotiate with individual homeowners to underground the service up to their property and those types of things. But yeah, all, all the environmental work, the dependency work related to permitting, land rights, easements, all of that is in flow right now. It's very complex. And so it's not a sort of fast track program, but we have a substantial number of miles in scoping for Nevada County currently. And I believe as we get into 24, 25, 26, you're going to see that ramp up substantially to the point where it's highly visible.
Okay. And then question, do you have a liaison person? I'm assuming it would be CDA or?
We, we coordinate frequently with a number of your staff across various departments. We have what we call our enterprise public works coordination team who work with all of your permitting folks. We have had some, I guess you would call them kickoff meetings or introductory meetings with Trish's team and others. And so we definitely know who we need to talk to at the county to be transparent on that work. And we're at the point now where it's really just putting all the appropriate planning in place, getting all the dependencies locked in so that we can then have, you know, a full conversation about where we're going, when, how long, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Scofield, can I ask one follow up question to Hardy's question? Is there some sort of mapping available where people can see where the undergrounding is going to be taking place?
I believe that we have some general mapping available on our public facing website. I can find that and get that to Jeff maybe to distribute or?
I think in light of what happened, obviously two very different issues, but in light of what happened with the Hell's Half Acre property, it would be very beneficial for all of us to be able to know where PG&E is going to be working because they are not subject to the same-
Right.
-environmental laws that a private project would be. So I don't want to be surprised by somebody calling me saying, "They're digging up in front of my house and no one told me."
I will take personal responsibility to be sure you're all briefed prior to any work beginning.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Brandon, thank you for being here. And I appreciate the fact that you are available when we do have issues within our districts and we can't call you. I think we're all interested to hear what the public has to say on this. So I think I'd like to open it up now to the public comment. Any questions, what I'd like to do is ask the questions. We'll make note of them. And then when we're through, we'll ask Brandon follow up with the questions that we have. So if you have questions or comments, please come forward. You have three minutes. Give us your name and if you would, your district
Michael Taylor, District One. I am surprised to hear how much is presented that what people or you guys are not in districts not happy with PG&E. I actually came prepared to talk in a positive manner because my experience over the last three or four or five years where I live in District One, I'm quite impressed with what they've done on my road, Cedar Song Road, where it ties into Bodie Ridge, then ties into Cement Hill Road. As well as driving down into the South Fork, you can see in many directions where the high, the power lines have been aggressively mitigated with the vegetation. I personally was, came here ready to be positive about my experience with PG&E. I would have one suggestion, going from a aggressive vegetation removal plan to, like Heidi was saying, that, you know, there's all these dots on trees and, and, you know, it seems like there's, you know, someone new on the road. I would have to stay once a month on my road. I personally think that there's an easement for power lines. And I would recommend that if they're getting rid of an aggressive approach to high tension power lines vegetation removal, that they look at removing these trees that are under, that are in a certain distance of the power lines when they're only this tall. I've been on my road now, I think, 15 years, and there's a digger pine that's, that was literally under the power lines that is now twice as tall, leaning over the top of the power lines where they have, you know, taken branches all the way up the side of it. So I'm personally not a tree hugger. I personally think that the vegetation should be moved at a, at a lower level, completely moved, five or 10 feet from each side of the, of the power line without having the discomfort of having PG&E on your road 10 times a year and then trimming the same trees over and over and over. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. There's nothing wrong with a positive comment. Any other public comment? Andy? 30 minutes? Yeah, you got, you're only one zero off. Two minutes for you, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. There's really just two very practical points that I would make, like to make today. The first is that related to the enhanced powers, help me out, what is it? I'll never get it right. Thank you. With regards to that, in, in 2022, I have, I have text, text message records on my phone of 19 separate power outages in my little corner of Rough and Ready in a proud resident of District Four. So we had 19 days with, without power, not full days, but portions thereof. And I'm not a, I'm not a network analyst when it comes to utilities, but, but you can see pretty clearly that there's something wrong in that part of the network and that part of the grid. And so I would just ask PG&E to, to try to make a distinction between what is a legitimate enhanced power setting response to a, to a branch or a squirrel or a, or a vulture and something, some equipment failure. Because 19, 19 days in one calendar year is, is a lot of outages. And, North Pondrosa Way, North Pondrosa Way, just off of Rough and Ready Highway. So I, I think we're on the other side of it now. I've had four events since January 1st of this year, which is a vast improvement. In 2022, it started January 28th and it went all the way through December. So we had events just about every month. So that's my first point. My second point is that, and it's right there. Oh, the communication that comes from PG&E, the automated message that says some fabricated time that we expect to have the, the grid re-energized by this time. It's never by that time. It's been my experience, myself and my neighbors, we're all very practical people. It's been my experience, myself and my neighbors, we're all very practical people, resilient and resourceful. If I know the power's out for two days, I'm moving my frozen meat to my in-laws' house in Nevada City. I'm, I'm firing up the generator, I'm making sure that I have enough gas for multiple days. But if power, if I'm told that the power's coming on at 4:00 and then 8:00, and then 8:00 the following morning, I know it's a big ask, but if that information that's relayed at the beginning of that event could be more meaningful, could be more fact-based. The message comes very quickly, so we know it's in. There was a bug, I'm not losing my mind. Okay, y'all saw the bug, right? Okay, thank you. Yeah, if, if that information could be more meaningful, it would be helpful for us to respond appropriately to the, to the immediate challenge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Chair Schofield, the board did receive a letter from Erin Tarr. She's the Executive Director of Berry Yuba Land Trust, and she wrote her email regarding Hell's Half Acre, which is being discussed. I can read it into the record if you'd like, but all the board members did receive it, and it's part of the public record.
Nothing different from what we've discussed.
It's about the same as what you've discussed.
Yeah, thank you, and it is in the records. Okay, seeing no other comments, I'm going to close the public comment portion of it. I have a quick question, it's a little different, Brandon. When you do the undergrounding, you know, one of the issues we're facing right now is AT&amp;T, and they're pulling out their lines wherever they can. What happens with undergrounding with the other utilities that might be involved with those lines or those, the infrastructure that you have?
That's a great question. So my understanding is, I'm not privy to all the meetings that the underground team has had with your staff, but I do believe that is part of the broader discussion where once we have an area scoped, the county, I believe, is able to provide feedback as to whether or not they want to, you know, advocate or require additional conduits to be put into place. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the case. I can validate that with my team and your team and come back, but we don't have the ability to force telecoms hand or equipment into the trench. It's really at their discretion, or if the county were to in some way require that to be the case, perhaps that might work. But that is one sort of side effect of undergrounding of the electrical overhead equipment is that where there's telecom on those poles, those poles will essentially be topped and will still exist in the field, but will only have phone lines on them, and the electrical equipment will be subsurface. That eliminates the wildfire threat because telecom lines, to my understanding, typically don't pose a threat in terms of fire ignition, but we're very focused on safety as it relates to our equipment. We, we certainly talk with AT&amp;T and all the telecoms all the time about a variety of issues. I just, I can't really speak to their position on entering the trench at a grander scale, but we, I do know that we have those conversations with your teams, and I think that race communications has been in some of those meetings and some of the other ones, so.
And one other question, Craig, maybe you can answer. Does PG&E have a one-dig policy? I mean, are we, I mean, we have a one-dig policy, but?
Chair Schofield, that's probably more of a question for CDA Agency Director Tricia, who will be up next on the, the next item, but there, there are dig-once policies that we are aligned with at the county level.
And I do believe there are consultations that occur when we've identified work areas for, for our program. I do believe we have those conversations with your team.
And back to the board, Sue.
Yeah, just want to, Andy brought up a good point, and I know we've talked about that many times, and I've talked about that at our PG&E meet at RC, RC2. So is there a little map or does it talk about, because I would say, I know we've had outages there already, but they've come on, we've been, you know, it's been replaced or repaired quickly. Of course, the wind and the bad weather hasn't started again, because one of our questions was, are we going to do more vegetation management in those areas where they really are clicked on and off a lot? That was, been one of the questions we talked about, and whether undergrounding would be more thought about in an area where you have constant ESPSs. So there were some questions like that. I don't know that I actually got all the answers yet. They're on my list again for next, for Friday. So just, that's a thought. And then could you even tell me how many of those have been, the little, little units have been, is there a map that shows where those have been installed?
I can get those, that information for you. I don't have it readily available.
No, I didn't think so. I'm just saying, let's just, so it helps, because that's probably the biggest thing. Last year, there were long outages. We'd have two and three days out, right?
Right.
So the one that, and we had one that was, I don't know, over 11 hours, I think, this last time was, as long as was out, which was better, but, you know, we're headed into the, the bad season yet, so that would be some good answers for my folks in Rough and Ready.
Sure, I can work on that.
Are those what you're describing, the isolation tools?
Yes, so there, there are two key pieces of equipment that are involved with our enhanced power line safety settings. One are the line reclosers. Those are essentially the safety devices that disconnect the electricity flow. And then the fault indicators almost look like a Christmas ornament that hang directly onto the conductor, and if they're flashing green, that means that it's in a normal state. And if it's flashing red, that means it's in an abnormal state. And so especially for the evening patrols, because just like with PSPS, we have to validate everything's intact before we turn it back on, that allows us to more quickly identify, okay, that fault indicator is red, and the one, two spans down towards my house is dead, so the fault is somewhere between those two fault indicators, if that makes sense. And I see Tricia joined us, I'm sorry if I muddied the waters there for you.
Tricia?
Thank you, Chair Schofield. Tricia Tilson, the CDA Director for the county. And I just wanted to mention, our public work staff, they work very closely with PG&E staff. Anytime an encroachment permit's applied for to, say, underground a power line, and that's a process where we do have our dig-once policy. So if it fits within that policy, for example, if they're undergrounding a mile of power line along a county road, we take a look at that and see if it makes sense to also put in telecom conduit at the same time. We have a process where it goes to our broadband working group, which includes Steve Monahan and several other county representatives, as well as SBC, and we take a look at, does this really make sense? Is there existing telecom, for example, in the area? Do we need underground conduit in this area? So far, most of the PG&E undergrounding that's been coming our way, mostly for their major transmission lines are off our county roads or in very rural areas. So it hasn't made sense yet, but I do expect some of the proposed areas will, will probably take advantage of that.
Thank you, Trish. That's good to know. Heidi?
Yeah, yeah, I, so I'd be very interested, I think you just committed to get us maps of where all that's happening, the undergrounding, or, and then same with the, because again, I'm not seeing any of that in my district, so I'm feeling kind of alone right now. So I'd love to see what's happening there. And I think, you know, I guess the silver lining is it sounds like things are getting better in other areas. So I think what I'm going to do now is every time I get a complaint, not just send them to the PG&E complaint line, but I'm going to write to you directly, and maybe we, maybe we have to start going one by one on these issues in my district.
I would appreciate the opportunity to solve for those.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion and we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor? I hope you didn't need a motion, Julie.
I didn't get a motion or a second, I think I missed all that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Thank you, Brandon, thank you so much.
Thank you all, really appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, right, that's the best thing to do, just call Brandon. So Tricia, I'm hoping what we can do is go through these individually old questions until the end, they've all been presented, and then we'll do a question comment by the board after they've all been presented. Same with public comment, we won't have to go through each one of those, and then we will have a series of motions at the end, but does that work for you?
Yes, Chair Schofield, thank you, and Tricia Tilson, again, CDA Director. We do have a quick presentation that really covers all of them. So this is 53A through 53J, and then, yes, I completely agree, I think that's a good approach.
Very good, thank you. Erica, I guess it's yours on the map.
I was going to introduce Erica Seward. She's our Senior Administrative Analyst for CDA with a focus on recreation. Sorry, there's a fly flying around. So with that, I'll pass this off to Erica, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Schofield and Board Supervisors. It's been a big day, so we hope to get through this presentation to allow time for discussion and, and questions, but I would just like to say how proud I am to be an employee here at the county. So today, I'm pleased to provide a presentation on the Nevada County Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund Grant Program, including an update on Round One projects and proposed awards for the second and final round of funding for your approval. My role is to steward and manage this fund, support project partners, and ensure successful project completion, but there are many who have contributed to and supported this effort since its inception back in 2021, and I'd like to acknowledge their involvement today. Ariel Lovett and the CEO's office, who initiated and then successfully transitioned this program to recreation and our CDA team. Desiree Belling for a seamless and professional procurement process for both rounds of funding. Staff and community partners who contributed their time, expertise, and careful consideration for evaluating 38 projects throughout two rounds. Our fiscal team, especially Vera DeFerrari, for tracking and dispersing payments to initiate projects, as well as tracking ARPA dollars and supporting reporting requirements for increasing public transparency. And supervisors Bullock and Hook, who have served as our ad hoc rec advisors. Thank you all. So as you know, the Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund was established to fund projects or programs that respond to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, increase and promote health and safety at highly impacted outdoor recreation sites, address unmet needs of outdoor recreation destinations or areas, and promote economic development and resiliency. The fund itself aligns directly with our second initiative of the Recreation Board objective to achieve these goals. The fund was adopted on February 8th, 2022, whereby $450,000 in ARPA community and economic resiliency funding was allocated, as well as general fund dollars of $400,000, making available up to $850,000, which is now held in the Recreation Budget Unit. On June 28th, 2022, $415,000 and change was allocated towards Round One projects, with 100% of these dollars drawing down from the ARPA allocation, which leaves the remaining balance, as you see here today. Two different strategies were developed to address recreation needs and establish criteria for this fund. The first was to address current emergent needs. Three programs were funded totaling $53,000 approximately to the Berry Yuba Land Trust, Circle, and Truckee Trails Foundation in the summer of 2022. These organizations provided education on river safety and trail etiquette, leave-no-trace principles, wildfire prevention, cultural and natural resource stewardship, and what to do in an emergency. They collected trash, spotted abandoned illegal fire rings, performed first aid, and reported incidents at popular hiking trails throughout East and West County and along the South Yuba River Corridor. In addition, two portable toilets and a dumpster were placed in key areas in Donner Summit to provide those services year-round, contracted and managed by Truckee Trails Foundation. The second strategy is to support sustainable change through a competitive grant program focused on infrastructure improvements and projects that emphasize an enduring benefit to the community. Project types that came forward in Round One, including infrastructure like parking, trail and trailhead development, signage and wayfinding to enhance safety, as well as waste abatement, toilets and trash receptacles, to name a few. So six projects were funded totaling $361,965. And also would like to note that we leveraged close to $430,000 in match funds. This map, created by Ian Redding, thank you Ian, for this work, has been a part of our master plan process, really looking at recreation and infrastructure improvements countywide. So this is just the first phase of that mapping exercise, really for the purposes of today, to showcase where county investment is being reflected in these high recreation areas. So this is a look at our first round projects, and what I'd like to point out today is that we're defining the boundaries by our rec and park district boundaries, as well as AB 1600 impact fee benefit zones. So there are six areas highlighted here, Bear River area in the south, Western Gateway to Oak Tree and Twin Ridges, which runs up the west to northwest side, the navy blue south central area comprised of the population centers of Grass Valley and Nevada City, which then follows along the Highway 20 corridor, and to the east, Donner Summit and Truckee. By plotting these project and program sites, you'll notice that there is coverage in all six recreation zones. You can see the main arteries where visitors access these areas, including Highway 49 and Highway 20, and that there is a concentration in highly impacted areas, which again illustrates that ultimately we're achieving the desired intent of this fund that was established. Points on the map do not illustrate project reach. For example, point number seven is a 39-mile wayfinding and trail signage project along the South Yuba River Corridor, so that doesn't showcase the impact and reach of that particular project. But for the purposes of today, we again just wanted to cite points on the map. Next slide. So over the past year, each grantee has provided quarterly updates on progress, which can be found on a dedicated webpage that you see here. It links to our Recreation Board Objective page, and it can be found at NevadaCountyCA.gov/OSF. Progress reports are provided quarterly, working with county staff to either support project implementation or troubleshoot any issues, or align with partners and community members to, again, achieve the goal of completion by December of 2024. Highlights from three of the ambassador programs were reported at the January workshop, with those programs completing the fund obligation, but whose work is never done, picking up trash, spotting safety hazards, and intercepting and educating visitors. To date, six projects are active and still in progress. With a quick update, so with our parking infrastructure projects, all permits have been obtained and contractors have been assigned. That includes Adam Ryan. Their work begins in the fall. At Scott's Flat, a new parking site at the end of Scott's Drop Trail by NID has been cleared of fallen trees and debris due to winter storms. Land has been cleared and leveled with the first layer of gravel down and spread, which should be completed again soon. Trail improvements are underway at the Harmony Ridge Trail System by Bonk, who have secured necessary equipment for building eight miles of new trail. The photo in the upper right is of a Bonk Volunteer Day, just one of many that have taken place over the past year. A signage plan has been created for improved safety and is in development, and trail counters have been installed with data that is shared with the county regularly, again, to be able to track trends and user habits. Extensive signage development is underway for the Circle-led mile marker system that extends, again, 33, 39 miles in the South Yuba River wells and Scenic River Corridor. A sign plan has been reviewed by the cohort, and carcinite posts sourced and created. The first phase of install begins this summer. And last, Truckee Trails Foundation and the Forest Service have installed a vault toilet at the Overland Immigrant Trail, Trailhead at Hobart Mills Road. The Johnson Canyon install is delayed until next summer due to trail plans that still need to be completed, working with the land trust. And a double vault toilet for Golden Court's day use area has been delivered and will be installed by October, thanks to Circle and the Forest Service. So this brings us to round two, and I would just again like to point out that it truly takes a village and the momentum continues into this effort, where it's not just our organizations as grantees that have been involved, it's also involved our collaborative working groups, land and rec managers, local contractors and vendors, hundreds of volunteers, and residents and visitors who have provided input in the surveys. Again, that's building a bigger picture here. So with- So with Round Two, for your consideration today, we're following the same criteria as Round One. The RFA sought proposals from eligible entities that would achieve previously mentioned goals with funds available up to $434,030, with ARPA dollars that are just a small portion of this allocation. Our application process timeline kicked off on February 8th with the release of the RFA, but really it began many months before that. And community engagement, being out and talking about this opportunity and really wanting to draw forward applications and proposals that address the many needs that have been talked about for several years. We did, again, implement a two-step process with accepting concept proposals on March 15th and full project applications on April 28th. We had an evaluation panel rank all projects reviewing proposals comprised of four staff and three community members, who were viewed and scored, plus Supervisors Hook and Bullock as non-voting rec ad hoc leads. In the two-step process, we received 20 proposals from 18 different entities. And we whittled that down to 12 proposals from 11 entities that were invited back. We ultimately received 11 full applications from nine different entities. All in total, the 20 projects that were put forward totaled over $1.5 million. So today, we are recommending eight projects from seven different organizations totaling $388,480. Your staff reports include full project proposals and agreements, so I will briefly highlight them here for the benefit of those tuning in and the audience today. So the first would be $30,000 for Bear Yuba Land Trust to continue the Trail Keepers Program, plus enhanced trail stewardship on public asset access trail easements and BYLG trails. The coverage area would include Cascade Canal Trail, Allen Theeson and Rambler Trails, the Independence Trails, and Wildflower Ridge Trail. Again, improving accessibility, fire safety, and vegetation management are the core focuses of this program. The second is $77,500 for Nevada County Consolidated Fire District to construct improvements at Station 82 on Highway 20 at Scott's Flat Road, a popular trailhead for Pioneer Trail, to include parking, signage, bike racks, and safety lighting. The next is for Sierra Gold Parks Foundation to improve our Western County State Parks, installing new and updated trail kiosks, and also contactless water stations, trash receptacles, but then also purchasing, facilitating the use of a changeable message sign, working with the safety cohort. The next is for Circle to continue their efforts with the Ambassador Program, and that would be fully funded by ARPA dollars. Circle would also receive, through our recommendation, $59,000 to develop trailheads at Van Nord and Meadow as a next step process with their restoration and recreation project for trailheads, parking lots, toilets, and more. Truckee Dirt Union, we've allocated $20,000 for Eastern County Maintenance and Repair of Trails. And Truckee River Watershed Council, $40,000 for another sustainable recreation and infrastructure project tied to meadow and sensitive habitat. So that would include a boardwalk and other amenities. And last, Truckee Trails Foundation. So that would continue their East County Ambassador Program, as well as installing toilets and other recreation amenities and signage along the Truckee River and at seven popular trail sites. Back to the map from earlier. So this illustration here, again, does showcase coverage countywide and truly the collective impact that has yet to be realized. So we're really excited. We love maps. And we'll continue to add to them as we have more projects. So again, this is exclusive to the Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund. But imagine when we start adding in cohort projects and other investments from our community, resiliency micro grants, grants that we secure, there are many efforts, and so forth. So our recommended action today is to adopt the eight resolutions authorizing these grant agreements. That's the breakdown in allocations. Would also like to note that each agreement was developed on a case-by-case basis. Reporting requirements will continue to ensure that projects successfully are completed and be posted on the county website for transparency. I also would like to note that from the recommendation with the panel, the allocation of funds, there would still be $45,590 left in general fund dollars that were approved by the board. And we have two additional items before you today that would recommend use of those dollars. So this is the next item outside of the eight package grant agreement recommended action. This would be for allocating up to $20,000 for Hurstdale Road improvements, improving public access to the Tahoe Pyramid Trail, which would include what you see before you, road surface improvements and general maintenance in the public right-of-way, improvements to road signage in advance of the trail connection to support area rec users, and improvements to parking and associated signage, again, at this popular recreation location. And the last recommended action would be allocating up to $20,000 for Donner Summit Resiliency. With recent impacts from winter storms, traffic congestions, rock slides, and road closures, this funding would provide relief for businesses and ecotourism destinations in the area, with a plan to be further developed, but mostly focusing on marketing and promotion, outreach, education of visitors about stewardship and recreation, as well as intercepting users with safety and travel information. So in summary today, looking at the time, we have the recommendation to adopt the eight resolutions. The second is adopt the resolution approving allocation of up to $20,000 for Hurstdale Road improvements. And the third is adopting the resolution approving allocation of up to $20,000 for Donner Summit Resiliency funding. And in closing, I just want to thank all the community partners for their efforts to address these needs in our community and our Round One recipients doing the work on the ground and at the front lines. We have some folks in the audience today that I may note of, others may have showed up, who have been doing that work. So Circle, I'd like to acknowledge them, as well as California State Parks. We may have some folks on the line, Truckee River Watershed Council, as well as Chief Robitell and our friends with Consolidated Fire, all who are here to answer your questions, either on the resolutions before you, as well as on Round One progress. And with that, we welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you, Erica. Good presentation. So Hardy, you and Sue were the ad hoc.
Sure.
You're pointing to Sue. You want to start it, Sue?
I can do that. Thanks, Erica. Good. I mean, it's kind of exciting to see this come to fruition at this point, right? It was really an interesting project. I was happy to be on the ad hoc, just reading all the applications. There was a lot of need and want. And to be able to, I got to commend the group that really weeded them all down and got to make the final decisions. There's a lot of great projects. And it kind of touches what recreation does in Nevada County and is going to make it better. I'm so excited to see the toilets go into Golden Quartz. That's like a key one right down there. That's going to be so helpful when that goes in October. We'll kind of miss the big season, but you know, there's just so many things that have been on the list for so long that, and looking at what does it make more resiliency here in the community for recreation and safety? And that's a big thing, safety and health. So, good job. Erica, you did a great job wrangling everybody together, as did Desiree. You know, getting to those meetings. We did this all via Zoom or Teams, I mean. And I think there was a lot of donated time that went into this and a lot of really thoughtful discussions. So I'm excited to see this come to an end and looking forward to having a yes vote for myself on all these.
Thank you.
Hardy?
Yeah, great work. It was awesome to be a part of that whole process. And I'd like to commend Des as well. She had, she keeps her ducks in a row. Everything was, had a process associated with it. So I feel confident that the community got a fair shake and all the applicants took their time to submit those. Takes a lot of time to put in grant applications, and I recognize that. And so I just want to thank everybody for doing that. And you know, one thing that, I spend a fair bit of time at some of those locations that we've done. So Sawtooth and Hobart, Jackass, Donner Lake, Donner Summit. And the work that we did in the first round is actually, you can visibly see changes in those areas. They're still entirely parked out. They're still really, really busy, but there's less trash. There's less human waste. There's more signage. There's sandwich boards and interpretive signage and trail ambassadors. And so I just would like to commend everybody and let you know that sometimes when we're, when we have our heads down trying to work to get the next best thing done, it's hard to see some of the progress we've made. And I just want to commend everybody in the room that has taken time to get that done because it is making a difference. It's reducing the impact from the environment, because it is still just as busy out there, but the impact is being reduced. And then on the Hurstdale piece, I really appreciate the board's support in that. I think ultimately, creating legitimate parking area is going to reduce the trespass and all those conflictual and friction point, public-private uses of the property there. So people can park legitimately. There are signs that people understand. The bridges are getting done. So bringing contributions and energy and resources to that little community that is ground zero for recreation is going to make a difference as well. And then the Donner Summit piece is interesting. You know, when the roads closed, the whole thoroughfare of the scenic byway of Old Forty and the Lincoln Highway, kind of, it breaks down and it doesn't quite work because people can't go through there. And so I think the communities and the businesses prolonged road improvements and then a winner that basically entirely closed the road to through traffic. So really feeling it for those communities and thanks for putting that item on there and finding a solution. Looking forward to working with you on the messaging for all those people in our community up there. So job well done. I know, Erica, you're going to talk more at some point in the future about our recreation master plan and doing some community outreach, because ultimately, all the recreation pieces, really the communities that are sitting there, people that live near those areas, are highly affected by the people that come. It's just like the South Yuba. So I appreciate your taking your time to reach into those communities and talk to people about how recreation impact affect them.
And I wanted to add it, and I failed to mention before that of those $1.5 million and projects that were put forward, they still are being evaluated as part of the master plan. So in our, you know, complete project matrix. So there's still, you know, opportunities to find funding and to support those efforts.
I know, really the other fund, I mean, if you're interested in recreation, you're listening to these things, that volunteerism is, everyone would love to have you come and be a part of these projects. Every one of these groups that got together, Ebon, all of them. If that's your interest, step up and come out and give them a hand because they're doing some incredible work.
Yeah, and all the, the funding is one piece to the volunteer organizations, right? Truckee Trails and Dirt Union, those have volunteer horsepower behind them. So our $40,000 is matched with like huge volunteer days with a bunch of people working for free. So that leverage money is really, I think, where the county is getting the biggest bang for the buck. It's not just a one-and-done spending of the money. It's really, it's seed money to get these organizations to the point where they can support the recreation economy.
Hardy?
Thanks, Erica. Went through a lot of stuff. I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments probably too. But if you could go back, just a couple clarifying questions. You mentioned that out of the original applications, there were nine full, but only eight funded. What happened to that ninth? Was it inadequate or did you decide there wasn't enough funding? Do you know off the, I'm not trying to, hate to ask you off the top of your head, but it seems weird that we-
No, if we go back to it, I think how it broke down is that one applicant that was invited back didn't meet the deadline in time to submit or decided to retract their application. And then another one of the final applicants, we requested that they break their project into two pieces just based on timing and feasibility. And that was, again, part of the concept proposal period is that the panel and staff provided advice and recommendations to the applicants in order to further tailor their projects in ways that we would ensure successful completion. And obviously Supervisor Bullock and Supervisor Hook, if I'm missing anything on that point. But that's how we got to that breakdown.
And the ones that did not get selected, are we encouraging them to resubmit if we feel like they were good? Or what's the stat? Because it's weird that this is ending up being a competitive process based on money. But like, it's nice to see that Truckee caught up. But Truckee got a lot of projects in this time. And I'm glad that Hurstman, you know, Hurstdale is getting the signage they needed and the road and all. But I'm still stuck with Purdon. And I just met with some private landowners out there last week, and they're having all the major problems we're having along that entire road. And they're trying to deal with it by themselves. I'm a little disappointed we didn't see, and these are bigger projects. These are going to be bigger, more expensive projects. But if we can take on a dozen Truckee projects piece by piece, maybe we need to break down the ones we've got that have been intransigent for years. Maybe we need to do those piece by piece as well. I don't know if that's the answer, but I really, I'm sorry that we aren't seeing more progress on those big Yuba River road issues, like the bathrooms, the state parks bathrooms. Maybe I just need to get an update on where we are. I know those are big and complicated. Yeah.
Yeah, just one quick comment question. It's, if memory serves me right, we talked as a board during the strategic workshop, and you brought up specific points related to what you just described. And we all, we came to the conclusion that there was some funding available to get those problems solved. And I'm just curious, and maybe it's just a progress report issue. But then, secondly, kind of philosophically speaking, I think at some point, maybe in the future, the board could have a discussion about state parks and what, you know, what connection we have with them, what role they have, what role we have. How do we work directly with them, maybe at a higher level, instead of doing the funding directly for the efforts that are needed? But how can we get inside the organization to find funding opportunities that serve them? But I would like it, my question answered, just really briefly on the piece that we talked about during the strategic workshop of funding the South Yuba cohort, because you lobbied for that, and I think that your colleagues, we all supported that. I just don't know where it is.
Yeah, so I'm trying to recall what the question was exactly. So it's, I'm hearing that what do we do with the projects that didn't receive the funding? And how are we encouraging or supporting investment? So there were a number of projects that didn't quite fit the criteria. You know, so they didn't get elevated in the ranking system. And I continue to have conversations with those applicants, whether they're park districts or others, to find other means of funding to support their work. So again, it's going to show up in the master plan. Conversations continue to take place to identify ways to fund those projects. And again, this is, I see it as how this project, or this program in Round Two was designed, was to initiate those conversations, draw out all of those projects, and then be able to play matchmaker in terms of funding and opportunities, or ways to collaborate and access other community partners that are doing similar types of work, so.
Yeah, and it's a tremendous amount of work. I mean, I commend you for all the work. And I think that is, that is like for maybe this first or second round, that's the goal. Find all those projects that are out there that can happen pretty quickly where you have partners. But we also need to be doing what we started doing in the cohort, which is identifying the problem areas. So it's not just what's out there that we can pick, you know, as we get further into it especially. We really need to make progress on those bigger problem areas, even if they are more difficult and complicated. So I know I've been, you know, you've been running the cohort. It's been awesome. I haven't been. So I'm happy to reengage on those particular, like Purdon Road and Edwards and Crossing and the bathrooms. I'm just, I'm happy to reengage if we need to just go back to the drawing board again. But I really want to see us, maybe we just need to do more outreach to find the right partners or if there's other things we can do around the edges. I don't know. I just feel like.
Didn't we, I guess my question didn't necessarily get answered, but didn't we have direct funding allocation for that in the strategic workshop? You raised your hand and we all listened to what you just described now, which was, we all said, yes, that's great, let's fund it. But is it, is it not getting-
That was this funding. That was this, that was funding for this ad hoc. And so these are the projects that came out of it this time around.
There wasn't set aside.
So that's, you know, I raised this a couple of weeks ago. That's, that's my concern, is that you guys are doing- That's, that's my concern is that you guys are doing, there's nothing wrong with what you're doing.
No, I just, maybe Trish has the answer.
It's all great, but it's, yeah, this started with the Yuba cohort and now we've identified all these other projects. But those big Yuba cohort projects are still to be, Tricia, you know, you've been there since the beginning, that we still need to address them.
Yeah, and at the, the board workshop, there were, there was funding set aside for some projects that'll be flushed out through the Rec and Resiliency Master Plan. And those are the bigger projects. So as you saw, we were able to give so many grants because they're all really small. But doing a lot of the work that we've identified through the cohort at the South Yuba River, for example, or Bear River, or additional ones on Donner Summit or Herschdale even, those are much more substantial projects. And that's where they're going to be prioritized in the Rec and Resiliency Master Plan. And then that'll help us and our community partners focus on those high priorities. And I think I just named probably all the high, highest priority locations.
Yeah, those, that was good. And you know what, Heidi, I think the other one was, we're in a timeline. Right. Yeah, those big projects, I don't know if we could get done, but we did get them to take care of the toilets at Purden, so that, that's close. Right, so I just, I understand that. You know, we're doing what we can right now with that pot of money. But it doesn't, you know, we're going on seven, six, seven years on the South Yuba River cohort and we've made tremendous progress, but the biggest problems are still there. So we have to find a way to get to them. And if you look at the population, like which places are most impacted by the population, it's going to be Purdon and Edward. So we, we're going to have to find a way to move forward on that. And again, I'm happy to reengage and help brainstorm or whatever we need to do. Thanks.
Yeah, I have, can I just mention one more quick? You know that we're on the topic, but I think that we, we need to have something in the rec and master plan regarding integration with our partner agencies because the county cannot carry this alone based on the fact that they're independent jurisdictions, they have funding that's available to them or limited to them, which we all understand. But we can't do it alone. And I think we need more official, more established, more permanent channels. And I've recognized that they're part of the South Yuba cohort and that's a big part of solving that problem. Maybe we need to elevate it in our ledge and edge platform. Maybe we need to get our delegates involved. Maybe we need to hold them accountable or talk to them in a different way, I guess, is the other piece. Because when I hear about large scale projects in the recreation piece, we all have those. I recognize that. But I think that the partners really, we need to get there with, with, you know, working through those relationships. And that includes East County. There's, and I, within the process that Supervisor Hook and I were in, there was a lot of time when we talked about state parks and their role and how it didn't fit, that it didn't fit with the grant funding opportunities we had and other HOAs and other people. So I think that there's definitely a discussion we need to have. And I would just encourage you to add that into the plan if you can.
Lisa? You don't want to get in on this?
Oh, Empire Mine's in there. Empire Mine, that's been funded through this round of grants. So we got coverage in all of, all of the six areas, I promise.
Well, I know Empire Mine was in it. We're not giving money, are we?
There's going to be kiosks that are. Right, and then through state parks, well, the Sierra Gold Parks Foundation. So they will be improving trailhead kiosks, you know, at all of our state parks from Bridgeport to Malakoff and also Empire Mine.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, and I was glad to see.
And just to be, this isn't about, like-
Do you want to say some more, Heidi?
Sorry Ed. I just want to, it's not just, it's not about district. It's about the, where the, where the issues are in the population. So I'm, I'm sorry I had to raise it.
Well, and those are the bigger, bigger projects. I'm glad to see some of the smaller ones, I guess, down in the South County. I don't even know where the Rambler Trail is. Do you?
Yeah, it's in Alto Sierra.
I know that. I'm living out in Sierra.
It's a great trail. Yeah, it's a great trail. It's off of Wolf Mountain Road, or, yeah, Wolf Road, I mean, sorry. Yeah, you'll have to check it out.
Okay, all right.
It's very popular.
That's great. I think the one on Herschdale is, there was an email, a person that wanted to be sure there, maybe, maybe they're actually online.
Yeah, and there were three emails. I responded to one of them last night and then two more. But I just would like to make a note, thank you for bringing that up. We will be, what we're describing today is the funding mechanism. What we'll be describing for the operational sign and actual work plan will be discussed at August 22nd in Truckee so that the constituents near that item can come and visit us and talk to us.
Very good, very good. And then the other one that I kind of noted here was the Donner Summit one. And I think that's kind of unique. You know, I can actually remember when Highway 40 was all they had. I actually drove it. And, and places that were really, people needed to stop and take a break. I think about Cisco Grove and, and those areas. And you got up into Soda Springs and those areas. Year round, there was heavy traffic. And the interstate, and you just eliminated that. So I look at the summit and I know they, they get that recreational area during ski season. I'm not sure what else they have there. And when, as you noted in there, some of the major, major issues that they've had in recent years, like smoke is one you don't even think about, but when it's like that, nobody wants to go up there. I know Kimberly, you've had, you've worked with some of those people up there. And I think that, I think that's really great. I think that is a pocket that really needs economic help as much as the recreational help. So I'm glad to see that too. Let's open this up to a public comment. And again, you can talk about the whole project or specific projects, but you have three minutes. And if you would, your name and your district, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Aaron Zettler Mann. I'm here as the interim executive director and watershed science director for Circle of the South Yuba River Citizens League. I wanted to thank you all, Chair Schofield and Board Supervisors, for your continued support of our projects. Our river ambassador this year, river ambassador program this year. So far, we have two bilingual river ambassadors this year. Again, thanks to your generous support, we've got nearly 10,000 individual interactions with people visiting Bridgeport and 49. And that's 9,600. We'll be well over 10,000 by the end of this summer. So I wanted to thank you for your continued support. And it's a program that we look forward to continuing for many years to come, especially when we have big water years like this one. That one-on-one, non-confrontational support with the public and river users is really important. I also wanted to give a bit more of an update on the Mile Marker Program. We have all of the materials. Everything is signed and stickered and ready to get installed. We're waiting on our life and schedule to slow down a little bit before those installs happen a little bit later this summer. And part of what is keeping us so busy is the monitoring program at Van Norden, which I understand you all get a chance to visit next month. And look forward to having some of our team out there showing you that wonderful restoration project and some of the interpretive signage, trailhead sort of additional infrastructure that this proposal is going to help support so that as visitors are up, they really understand what they're looking for and how those natural processes have restarted and life and the health of that meadow is coming back. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Aaron.
Good afternoon, Chair Schofield, Supervisors. My name is, for the record, is Mark Cameron. I'm with the Executive Director of the Tahoe Pyramid Trail since June 1st. So I've got a lot of learning curve ahead of me, but boy, I really appreciate what I'm hearing today. The county, Nevada County really seems to be a very trail-friendly location. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about our, our support of, let's see, it's, I believe it's item 53I, SR23-4069, the $20,000 of unexpected, unexpended funds for Herschdale. I think adding that to parking lot there will, will go a long way to helping resolve some issues that we've had with some of the private property owners in that area. And it's, it's a much needed thing for, for that section of the Tahoe Pyramid Trail. I just want to also kind of give a shout out to Supervisor Bullock, Tricia, CEO Lehman. TPT Tahoe Pyramid Trail got invited to a meeting out at that location to, to review the surveying results that the county had done out there. We really appreciate being a part of that meeting. And I'd really like to just throw our name out there too, to become, be part, party to that recreational master plan. I think, I think most of the, the trail builders in Nevada County would, would love to be participants in that. I think that would, that'd be a great thing moving forward. That's all I have to say. And thank you for your support. And I hope that you fund that, that parking at Herschale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jessie Lox. I'm the Board President for Sierra Gold Parks Foundation, which is the association that oversees our three state parks here in Western Nevada County. Thank you so much for supporting our grant application of $71,000. This was, totally came out of the cohort. That has been such an incredible experience for us and working with our community partners and learning more about what we can do to address river safety, fire safety in the river canyon. I think that we have shown that that partnership has really had incredible impact, especially with the communication that's come out this spring around high water, swift water, cold water. So some of the things that are going to happen within the rollout of those items in that grant are going to be communications. So we've got some really, the, the need for solid communication before you get into the river canyon is essential. And we saw that just recently around 4th of July, when there was a new CMS sign put on Highway 49 before you got down to the crossing. So funding something like that, that's information that can be about parking, fire, swift water, abundance of difference, and it can also be in two different languages. So that is absolutely essential for our visitor safety and also the experience. Something else is going to be the, the introduction of some new kiosks at different locations at the river crossings. And to be able to have good information about river etiquette, safety, again, just ensuring that that user experience down at the river is a safe one. And then of course, there's those exciting sexy trash receptacles that'll kind of help deviate some of the, the trash that we do see down there. So I just want to thank you so much. All these items came from a lot of input from our Rangers. We have Ranger Mary Moyer here. And so they are on the ground. They know what's going on. And again, the, the relationship that we had with the cohort was absolutely essential in determining all the things that we were able to apply for. And we are so grateful for you guys opening up this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessie. Any other public comment?
I said, leave it to state parks to bring, to make trash receptacles sexy. I can't wait to see that.
Madam Clerk, any?
Thank you, Chair. There's no callers online, though we did receive a scattering of emails in support of the various items. The board all received them and they'll become part of the public record. I could read them if you like. And, but we also did receive a letter of concern that Supervisor Bullock had talked about, and the board members also received that.
I think we're good. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Then I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the board. If there's no other questions, then we have about 10 of these motions to go through. So we will start with, first of all, the resolution approving a grant agreement between the County of Nevada and Consolidated Fire District for the Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund Grant. It's $77,500.
So moved.
Motion Hall, Second Hook. Madam Clerk?
District four.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
And District two.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution approving the grant award agreement between the County of Nevada and the Bear Yuba Land Trust. Outdoor Safety Fund in the amount of $30,000.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook, Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one. District one.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, reading the next one.
District five and District two.
Yes. Next, SR234131, a resolution approving the grant agreement between the County of Nevada and South Yuba River Citizens League in the amount of $59,000. This is for Van Norden Meadow Trailhead Development.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Bullock, Second Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk?
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Next is SR234132, resolution approving the grant award agreement between County of Nevada and Truckee Dirt Union for Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund Grant.
So moved.
This is for $20,000. A motion Supervisor Bullock, Second Supervisor Hook.
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Next, Resolution 234133, resolution approving the grant award agreement between the County of Nevada and Truckee River Watershed Council. Again, outdoor visitor safety. This is for the Ura Valley Sustainable Recreation Habitat Protection Project.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Bullock.
Second.
Second Supervisor Swarthout.
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five. District two.
Yes. Next, Resolution 234134, resolution approving the grant award agreement between the County of Nevada and the Truckee Trails Foundation Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund in the amount of $74,280.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Bullock, Second Supervisor Hook.
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Next is a resolution approving the grant award. This is number 234136, between the County of Nevada and South Yuba River Citizens League for the Outdoor Safety Fund.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall, Second Supervisor Hook. This is for $16,700.
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Next is a resolution approving the grant award agreement between the County of Nevada and Sierra Gold Parks Foundation for the Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund. This is the amount of $71,000.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hall, Second Supervisor Swarthout.
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Resolution 234069, this is approving the allocation of up to $20,000 of unexpended fund remaining in the fiscal year 2023-24 Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund for signage, parking and road service improvement within the county right of way on Herschdale Road along its approach to the Tahoe Pyramid Trail.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Bullock, Second Supervisor Hall.
District four. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. And finally, Resolution 234062, approving the allocation of up to $20,000 of unexpended fund remaining in the fiscal year 2023-24 Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund to be utilized for business assistance and outreach in the Donner Summit region. Motion Supervisor Hook.
Second.
Second Supervisor Bullock.
District four. District 3? District 1?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes. Good job. Thank you, Supervisors. All right. Thank you, Trish. Thank you, Erica. Good presentation. And here we are, looks like spending more money in District 5. This is Tricia and Heba. This is a resolution ratifying the contract for the Donner Pass Road Rockslide Project between the County of Nevada and Niels Controlled Blasting LP in the amount of $389,695, plus a 10% contingency of $38,969.50 for a total amount of $428,664. Authorizing the Director of Information and General Services Agency to execute the contract. Heba?
Honorable Board Members, good afternoon. I'm Heba Lengendi, Public Works Director. I realize that this is the last presentation of the day, so I will try to keep it short. On June... On June 9th, 40 to 50-ton boulder fell on Donner Pass Road, thereby damaging the road, the guardrail, as well as the retaining wall. To secure public safety, we quickly closed the road until we assessed safety conditions. And the map shows the location of the rockslide, as well as the hard closures where we barricaded the travel lanes, as well as locations of the advanced signage. Patrick, Principal Engineer, has been doing a great job in managing this project, and he is actually in the field today checking the work. We retained NV5, who's on call consultant, along with the expert Marty Woodard, to evaluate the stability of the slope. And they did model the slope using drones, and they concluded that there are fresh fractures and that the slope is not stable. Before we proceed with the work with associated expenses, we decided to get a second opinion. So, we sought the help of Blackburn Consulting, and after they performed their evaluation, they concluded with the same finding. As a result, we initiated an RFP on July 20th, seeking consultants to do the rock scaling. We received two proposals, and we selected, using a panel from consultants and internal staff, selected Niels Controlled Blasting as the best fit to perform the work. These photos actually were included in the presentation just to show the scale of the work. For example, this is the rock that's 40 to 50 tons, and this is the amount of rock areas that we're working with. John Vizi, our roads manager, and his team also have been doing a great job. By, last week was the help of spotters to evaluate the, the stability of the slope while our crew performed the work. They added three feet of fill, only about one foot is shown on, on this photo. They also added a care rail, again, as the guardrail, and steel plates to protect the utilities. And, and Niels Blasting, Niels Controlled Blasting started the work yesterday, and they will be adding a steel mesh of about 6 to 7 feet above the guardrail. So, the total height would be about 10 feet to prevent any rocks from falling downhill where there is residence. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking how to make it short while I'm going through the slides. The work is estimated to be completed by August 25th, but we don't have full control over the schedule. It's going to be determined as we progress with the scaling of the rocks, and if the slope is deemed unstable, we will have to stop working until we perform additional planning. The cost of the rock scaling is about $390,000 in addition to 10% contingency for a total of about $430,000. This is in addition to the funds that was previously approved by the Board for the initial evaluation, as well as labor and material costs by the engineering and the roads divisions. The work is, this estimate is for three weeks worth of work. We're hopeful that we could complete the work sooner at a lower cost. Although we're currently funding the work using general fund, we are seeking, on, on the state and federal level, emergency funds. With that, I will end my presentation, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to go into the, the details.
Hardy, your district?
Thank you for the presentation. Just one question. How likely is it, do you feel, that we're going to get reimbursed for, for the work?
It's hard to tell. We will seek various sources of funds, including emergency funds. Actually, even earlier today, we were working on a letter to the Director of the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, seeking $861,000 for the snow removal. So, we will continue to pursue funding, but it's, it's hard to tell whether we would be awarded or not.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The other piece I was going to ask is, because of the construction and the condition of Highway 80, we know that it's going to be reconstructed over the next couple of years, or at least District 3 Superintendent of Roads is saying that 80 will be torn up and reconstructed shortly. And 40 is kind of the alternate route in that area for emergency services. I'm just wondering if we have properly articulated how important that road is and, and the cost associated with it. Maybe that could be another funding partnership there. Just, just one piece to throw out there, and I know you're thinking of multiple other things. I don't have any other questions. I, I've been out there, and I just sure appreciate the work to jump on it. I'm disappointed in the cost. I wish it was cheaper. I think we all do, but it, it, we have no choice at this point. We have to just, just do it and get it done. So, thank you for your work.
And, and there will be, actually, the same reporter who interviewed you last week will be there again tomorrow, and Pat and I will be there. So, we're continually providing information to, to the public and to the community.
Thank you.
Hardy?
Yeah, thank you. I was just asking Hardy, and so maybe you could explain for all of us what the rock scaling is that they're doing. What exactly is that?
Rock scaling is basically a rock removal. They will check the unstable pieces, and they will keep on removing these rocks, and, and depending on whether the overall piece, maybe we can... So, some of these parts will be removed, and depending on the stability of the overall piece, it will be determined when to stop and whether it's even stable enough to continue with the work. But scaling is removal of...
And, and it's just bit by bit, so we can't just...
Yes.
...blow it up and... Really, it's a delicate operation, and then you have to assess it after each time you remove?
Yes.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Are those blasting sites on there?
I'm sorry?
The markers on the blue, are those, there's three markers. Are those actually blasting sites?
No, these are, they identify the areas of concerns. Like, this is an area of concerns altogether, because of the, the...
No, no.
...the way the rocks are situated.
Oh, it is? That's where the rocks came from?
The little dot, the markers?
Oh, these? Oh, I, I apologize. It, it was the available picture, but no, they don't actually show anything in particular.
Okay. Lisa? Okay. I just wonder, is there damage to the road itself, and is there major damage there?
Yes, there is damage.
Does this figure have anything to do with the repair of the road?
We will actually do the repair of the road in-house, hopefully. That's why we're putting the fill, the three-feet fill on top of the road, not to cause additional damage. If it remains the way it is today, there is some damage, but it's repairable using our crew. If there isn't additional damage that would happen, then we would be able to fix it ourselves.
And I'm kind of surprised to see that the road fund is able to handle this. What does it do to other projects?
It would actually, it would actually translate into less maintenance. That's why it cannot continue this way. That's why it will be reimbursed from the general fund until we seek other sources.
Okay, okay. So, the, the road fund is a temporary situation?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, open it up to the public for public comment. Cool.
Hey, Ed. I owe staff an apology, and it's probably because of how the newspaper represented that there was almost a half a million dollars in cost in removing the rocks off the road. So, yeah, I owe you guys an apology. Thank you for your email, Tricia. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I know, I think we're all concerned about the cost. Is there any other public comment? Is there anybody online?
I'm not seeing any callers. I did not receive any emails either.
I'll close the public comment then, and I'll bring it back to the Board for any final discussion or, or a motion.
I'd move to approve the allocation to fix the road.
I'll second.
Motion Supervisor Bullock, Second Supervisor Swarthout. Madam Clerk?
District 4? District 3?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes. All right, the only thing we have left is our announcements. Is there a desire to do announcements?
Chair Schofield, I am so sorry to interrupt. When we were discussing item 53, there was a caller that I missed. My team just let me know that I missed a caller. I was wondering if you'd be willing to open up number 53 for one comment. They're still waiting, I understand.
Or, yeah.
And it's 53I.
Yes, I will.
It's your call, okay.
I will, yes.
Okay, thank you. Can we bring the caller in?
Hello?
We hear you. Go ahead. Sorry we missed your call.
Thank you. Randy Mesger, landowner in Herschale, California. Just wanted to state that, I don't think a lot of you have known, but the Herschale residents have strongly opposed parking interior of Herschale. We actually provided, in conjunction with the county and Tahoe Pyramid Trail, we actually built parking spaces for the Tahoe Pyramid Trail and built a legal turnaround for the Fire Department on Herschale Road in conjunction with the county. This plan that's presented as funding-only clearly proposes to install additional parking interior of Herschale. The Tahoe Pyramid Trail in its inception promised the Herschale community that there would be no vehicular impact to Herschale, and to date, that has been not the case. And they proposed their parking at Boca 80 intersection, and then it would be just that, a trail through the community of Herschale. Since then, there's obviously been a need for more people to be outside, and it has become problematic. And unfortunately, we have property on both sides of the trail, and with continued parking issues, there is trespassing issues along with many other issues, and I don't need to go on, but it just seems that you folks, everybody should know that the Herschale community strongly opposes any parking interior of Herschale, and it's behooving to me why the county's going to spend money to build more parking interior of Herschale. And that's all I have for now. It's a little late. I know you've already passed it, but it's just funding, and yes, we do need signage, and we do need some trail improvements and roadway improvements, but I just wanted to state the fact that the parking issues interior of Herschale are not on the priority of the Herschale community.
Thank you, Randy. And again, I'm sorry we missed your call, and it is noted that it will be on our agenda on the 22nd of this month, and the meeting will be in Truckee, so you'll have an opportunity to be there at that time.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, and Tricia and Heba, thank you for your presentation. Do we want to do announcements? I know it's been a long time. Very good. Then you know what? This meeting is adjourned.